Okay, good evening. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, September 4th, 2019 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. I welcome everybody here tonight. We're meeting here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North in Mashpee, Massachusetts, in the Racoit Meeting Room. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join with me.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
On behalf of the Planning Board, I'd like to welcome you here tonight. I would like to remind everybody that this meeting is being videotaped and recorded. If you have the opportunity to address the board, please do so at one of the mic stands. Provide your name, your address for the record, and state your comment. I know some of you have been here before, but I'm going to repeat this. All comments are made through the chair. Please wait for the chair to recognize you before speaking. The board may address your comments directly, ask the project proponent, staff, or consulting engineer to address your comments, or take your comments under advisement. As always, the Planning Board appreciates your participation in all matters that come before the Planning Board. Okay. So, the first matter of business is approval of minutes from August 7th, 2019, and August 21st, 2019. I have the August 7th ones. Okay. So, I read them. I don't have any amendments. I'd accept a motion to accept the August 7th minutes as presented.
(Inaudible).
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have one minute to our first public hearing at 7:05. Do you want to do Charlie Rowley's August invoice?
Sure.
Requesting the board approve an expenditure to Charlie Rowley for services provided in the month of August for $1,440.
So, this is for plan review. Attendants at two regular meetings, plan review and inspections, for $1,440.
We'll make a most repaid, Charlie Rowley, $1,440.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Pay attention. Okay. So, the first matter is Best Buy Beverages. Seeing the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the public hearing for Best Buy Beverages pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, at 7:10, in the Racoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, First Floor, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, to consider an application made by Kevin Andrade to construct a commercial building to be used for retail use, redemption center, and office space to be located at 11 Evergreen Circle, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, currently identified as Lot A on the plan titled Definitive Subdivision Plan, Evergreen Circle, prepared for Evergreen Industrial Park, number 588, Main Street, Route 130 in Mashpee, Mass., approved on 11/20/2017 by Mashpee Planning Board and recorded at the Bonsable Registry of Deeds under Plan Book 674, page 38. This application is made pursuant to Sections 174-25(c)(1) and under Section 174-25(e)(12). So, this matter is continued from our August 21st, 2019 meeting. So, I'd like to recognize the project proponent.
Good evening. For the record, Rowley Sardi from Cape and Islands Engineering, representing the applicant. As the chairman lady just mentioned, it was continued from a couple of weeks ago. There was a couple of items that were noted to provide additional information. So, last week, some of the plans were revised and submitted. Also, additional information for the record was submitted, which included the water quality report that was approved and submitted for the subdivision of Evergreen Circle, I believe it was a couple of years ago. We submitted turning movements for two particular vehicles around the facility, which were the trailer truck WB50 and the Mashpee ladder truck. We submitted revised elevation plans for the building. And along with the revisions to the elevations of the building, the footprint of the building was revised. What dictated the revisions to the building and the elevations was following the recommendations from the KCOG Commission Design Standards or Recommendations, where instead of having a perfectly rectangular building, now we have the two front-facing walls, exterior walls, having some projections, some awnings, to give it more character. There's also some changes to the materials to be used on those two faces. Instead of having a metal-cladded face or outside walls, we have more traditional materials. Then, we received comments from Charlie Rowley on the design and the site plans, and we addressed most of those comments with a revised set of plans. There are three items that we provide additional information as to why this design was like that, and I'll just touch on those three because all the other ones were addressed in the revised plans. One of the comments was about the fire water service that's being proposed off of Route 130 instead of off of Evergreen Circle. The applicant was informed by the developer of Evergreen Circle that the Mashpee Water District had performed some pressure testing on the water hydrants on Evergreen Circle and on Main Street, which is Route 130, and there was an additional residual pressure on Main Street, which they prefer to be used for the fire suppression system or service. That is the reason why we have two different locations for the two different water services, and we chose to keep it that way based on those recommendations. Another comment was on, there's some recommendations on adjusting some of the gratings at the entrance. When we started looking at that grading to raise the entrance by approximately six inches, that would have rendered the initial portion of the driveway at 8% slope. And understanding that Evergreen Circle is a road that's at 1%, once our site is developed, we're proposing 1% and 2% grades, and 8% grade coming into this sort of like low-grade areas seemed like a little too much. So, what we did, we revised the plan for the grading, adding additional spot shots to show that the water is geared or directed towards the waterway. Instead of raising the entire driveway at 8%, we're keeping it at 4% going up the driveway and then flattening out to a 1% slope. There was also some, I guess, some suggestion about the landscaping plan or the material. We did add some species to what is the crown cover that's called on the landscape plan, and there was some, I guess, suggestion as to what the board would allow in the areas that are supposed to be naturally vegetated. The applicant at the current moment doesn't ask permission to do anything, but that's something for the board to discuss. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, so I'll start. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take comments from the board members, our town planner, our consulting engineer, and then open it up to the public. Okay? So, Joe, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I applaud you, actually. You hit a lot of our concerns from the last meeting.
Thank you.
With regards to the exterior design changes you made to reflect the Commission guidelines, are you happy with those that you've met?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think you did a good job, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I watched the meeting. When I got back and saw all the things that went on with regards to some of the challenges that Charlie pointed out, I noted real quickly that you've addressed virtually all of them. I understand why you're talking about the epicentar grade, but I think if Charlie is comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. I saw nothing else that stands out that bothers me. I understand why you're going off of Main Street with that fire line. It makes sense with the residual pressure, so I don't have any other problems with it.
Okay. Joe?
I have no problems with it.
No, I don't. I like the way you changed the front with the shingles and stuff. Makes it look better for being the entrance off of 130. Thank you for doing that, Joe. That was good. I have no problem.
I actually don't want to take credit for that. That's the architect, but I relay the message.
That makes it look nicer.
And the owner, thank you. Evan, do you have any comments?
I suppose two. I do think the architectural elevations proposed are an improvement from what we initially saw with their consistency of the KCOG Commission Design Guidelines. The narrative is pretty abbreviated, so if possible, I'd love to hear, for the board's sake, a little bit of why it came to those design choices or how the architect came to those design choices, and if there might be additional areas for intervention to grow greater consistency, because this is a building that fronts on Main Street, and the intent of requiring those guidelines was to elevate the architecture, which I think progress has been made, but I'd love to hear a little bit more. Additionally, a note that Charlie had pointed out that I wanted to just bring up again was the requirements for the development standards in C3 districts is that 40% of the lot remain undisturbed natural area. And I believe Charlie had pointed out that an initial iteration of the plan didn't put a calculation of how much of the lot area was undisturbed. So, if you've addressed that in a future revision, could you point that out, and if it's not there, could that be addressed?
Yeah, so what about the design guidelines?
So, for the design guidelines, I can just probably just open up the architectural plan and describe what's there. I don't know all the backgrounds behind it, but let me do that.
I think there's a little, a short narrative in here, right? You basically changed the roofline.
So, originally, the design for the building was a metal building.
Right.
Perfectly rectangular. What the architect has done, the facade of the building that's facing Evergreen Circle, the center portion of it, approximately 42 feet or so, is bumped in.
Right.
That gives a difference in
Modulated, yep.
...the reveal, following the Cape Cod Commission Design Standards. The metal was intended to be, the building was intended to be metal. Now, that middle section that was reseated on the face of the building is going to be white cedar shingles, which is a typical Cape Cod material. Then, the two wing sides on that same Evergreen Circle-facing wall is vinyl siding of medium gray. Then, the two entrances were shifted further out towards the corners, and they have awnings over them, so there's a projection against, on the face of that building to give it a difference. Now, on the bottom section of the entire front, there is what they're calling barn boards, vertical barn boards, to give it another type of material. Those same elements kind of are mimicked on the Main Street-facing exterior wall, which is the vertical boards, the vinyl siding, the awnings. What's not shown on that side of the building is the cedar shingles, and it's no longer showing a sign, a building sign, on that face. At the prior hearing, we had mentioned that that was the side that was going to have a, if there was going to be a building sign, that was going to be the side. The developer has chosen to flip the interior divisions, and now the two signs are facing Evergreen Circle. That's as much as I can go on that description. The natural open space, it is added on the revised plans on Sheet 1, the zoning compliance table. It shows that we're proposing 50% of naturally open space. Now, this takes into account the improvements to the landscape that we are doing, which also was reviewed by plan and design review committees, and there was some input about some of the original landscape plant species to be changed to be more of the native species. Those are the revisions.
Can I ask you more questions? Which elevation is on Main Street?
The small elevation.
The east elevation?
The east elevation is Main Street.
And the zoning compliance table shows 50% minimum open, 50%, the required minimum open space area required 40%. The existing proposed 50%. So, does this say that 50% of the parcel is undisturbed?
It's proposed to be open space, naturally vegetated.
So, some of the area will be disturbed?
Will be disturbed and replanted with the landscaping.
So, then my question would be, what percentage of the total lot area is to be disturbed and what is left natural?
That number, I do not have it of hand.
I ask this question because I think the zoning is pretty clear, and 40% of the lot is required to be undisturbed, unless relief is sought and granted. Otherwise, that's a number I think is important to understand.
So, it's my understanding we don't have a draft decision for you to look at tonight? Okay, right?
That's accurate.
That's correct. So, you'll have to get us that calculation.
Now, I know that the proposed site design is for 50% to be naturally vegetated after the landscaping is complete. The natural, undisturbed, I'm pretty confident right now it's not going to be 40%. Right now, a portion of the existing land on Main Street, it's already disturbed. It will be allowed to grow natural, but if you're saying that we can't count any of those areas
Right. I think there's a difference between never having been disturbed for the last 40 years versus allowing to go back to an undisturbed space after construction. I think that sites get disturbed.
Yeah, that one did, though.
Because this site, this site was disturbed before.
Disturbed.
In the past.
Before they started designing and engineering on it. Right, that front piece was touched.
So, the intention here is that the project, after completed, is going to allow 50% of the lot to become naturally vegetated.
And not maintain landscape?
Not
Not pruned?
No.
I think that's the correct interpretation of that.
Yeah, I don't know if I agree. I do agree that I think it is a better interpretation, but I think the zoning as written, I don't think we hold that same
Right. I don't think the zoning is intended that you can't run a truck over 40% of the lot. I think what it's supposed to be, the end product, that's supposed to be undisturbed, not landscaped, not mowed, not asphalted, not used, just left in its natural state.
Heck, just to run the fire line, they're going to have to disturb from
Right.
Right down that center of that undisturbed area right now.
Right, and they will meander through that area, and then everything will grow back.
Right, and it'll be natural.
Right.
So, I think we need that note to match the zoning bylaw. Do you know what I mean, on your zoning compliance table? What do you think, Charlie?
Yeah, I think Evan's right that
I think too, yeah.
You at least need to show it to be sure that you're in compliance with it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, there's a question later on.
Don't you put like that bubble around it, natural, undisturbed area? Yeah. That should be shown on the plan and then in your zoning compliance table. But, right, if something has to get installed on the site and it goes through that zone, I don't think that's the intent of the bylaw. I think the intent of the bylaw is to, its final product is to be left in its natural state.
I think
It's not to make it conservation land.
Well, the zone, well, I want to agree. I want to agree, but there is an inclusion in the zoning that uses the word "undisturbed", which to me says that if you were to take a 20,000-square-foot lot, or a 10,000-square-foot lot, then 4,000 square feet of that lot need be, need remain, undisturbed prior to the development of that lot.
Yeah, I don't see it as a conservation
I don't necessarily want to agree, but
I don't take that, I don't take that bylaw as saying that it's conservation land, never to be disturbed ever. I think it's supposed to be in its final state.
Left natural.
Left natural.
The reason I don't know if I agree is because the same section of the zoning bylaw contemplates situations where there isn't natural wooded area and provides language for how to revegetate that to replicate a naturally wooded area. So, I think the intent is to never disturb it, or it doesn't really, isn't clear on this.
Turn it back to its natural state.
But then you're stripping the natural woodland for, I don't think the zoning is clear in that, that it states you may disturb it and then revegetate it to be natural.
I think we'll be okay if we
I understand what you're saying, but this lot here, they already disturbed the natural thing, so shouldn't they just bring it back to the 40% natural, then develop any plans and make sure it's back to 40%?
That's how I interpret it.
Right, because what I read on this bylaw, this bylaw applies to all the lots on C3 districts.
That's accurate.
If there is a lot on a C3 district that's completely disturbed, they will never comply with that regulation. They'll have to bring it back by landscaping.
Right.
Which I believe that will be the vision, that everybody's goal would be, and that's what we're trying to achieve with this project.
I think if you just, right, if you change that notation on the zoning compliance table and put a notation somewhere that if there's any construction disturbance in that area, that it gets restored to its natural state.
Yeah, I agree with the condition.
That's what I recommend.
I agree with the condition that the cover sheet will be revised to add that particular zoning note.
Okay.
I agree with Evan. It's kind of gray, but I also agree with you in that, what's the end product is what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's all right. It's going to make it look nice.
No, I agree. My job is just to tell you what the zoning does.
Let's not make a molehill out of a mountain, out of a molehill in this.
I know the difference between the two. So, thank you. Anything else, Evan?
That's it. Thank you.
Charlie?
Just two comments, if I may, on the things that weren't changed on the plan that Row talked about earlier. One of the reasons that I made the, or did the question on the location of the water main that will service a sprinkler system was for that very discussion that you've just had, because in order to put that in, you're going to have to clear the trees within a 10-foot swath, dig the trench, put the pipe in place, then backfill it. And what do you do with it after that? Do you leave it just as a lumen seed? Do you revegetate it, which means that the pipes are now going to be under future trees? That was one reason that I questioned it. The second one had more to do with just sort of putting the two services in basically the same area. Now, while it may be true, I'm not sure whether you, when you go beyond this area, whether or not the water main in Route 130 actually makes a loop anyplace to come back. Do you know?
It doesn't. It deadens, and that's the challenge there.
I have no qualm with leaving it where it is. I don't really think there would be that much difference in either the static pressure on the main. It's going to be the same thing because the two pipes come together. They're not that far apart. When you begin drawing water out of that system, it's going to be coming from Route 130, and whether it continues on 130 and makes a bend to go into Evergreen, I think the residual pressure, because they're so closely located, you're not going to see the difference. But if the preference is for the water department to leave it where it is on 130, that's fine.
Okay.
As far as the drainage is concerned, what I've noticed in recent submittals is there's been a shift from putting catch basins along the edges of parking areas and along the edges of driveways and so forth with a crown in the middle of the pavement. It's all being shed to one side, minimizing the number of catch basins and receiving points where you can collect the water. In this particular case, the pavement is being pitched toward one of the runoff areas that's close to Evergreen Circle. The change in elevation isn't that much. During the wintertime, when you plow the snow, unless you go out there with a shovel and clean off that paved waterway, you could end up with that being blocked and the water going out to Evergreen. One of the conditions that we put on Evergreen Circle was that it should not include any stormwater runoff from the surrounding properties, because the design of the system that goes all the way down to Evergreen and into that circle was never designed to take the additional flow from the sites themselves. So, they need to be incorporated within the lot, which they have done.
Right, okay.
What I was suggesting was that they adjust the grade just a little bit so that the low point is not headed toward Evergreen Circle, but is contained within the site. I may not have given the explanation very clearly because I'm just hard to put into words what you want to say on a piece of paper with a diagram, but I do believe that if the low point was adjusted, you wouldn't get quite an 8% grade. I think it might be around 4 between elevation 113, that's shown on the plan, and 114. I don't think there's that much of a difference, and it would eliminate that potential for the water just bypassing the waterway and going out into Evergreen Circle. So, I would like to look at that a little bit closer with Row, to see if we can accommodate that.
Why don't
The rest of the plan, I have no problem
Would you agree to consider that with Charlie?
Yeah, those revisions, we can massage those gratings. It is very, very flat, and any changes would look kind of like big, because now we're talking about six inches here or there. And it's a matter of just creating a little hump coming into the driveway to avoid most of that runoff exiting the property.
Okay.
But it could be done.
I think we can make it look so there's no real dramatic hump going in. It's just relocating the low point where the water will then travel into the drainage area, I think, without impacting anything on everything.
It's just a matter of tilting the roadway, right?
It's a little bit more than that. It's shifting the low point, but it's not dramatic, and I don't even think you'll see it. So, I think between the two of us, we can work it out.
Yeah, shifting, I can see shifting the low point would work. What I had done when I was reviewing the comments, I was doing something else
Okay.
From what I understood, but shifting the low point will definitely work.
All right, so we're going to continue this. I'm sorry. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in favor of this matter? Is anybody from the public that would like to speak against this matter? Is there anybody in the public that would like to make any neutral comment regarding this matter? Are there some butters in the audience? Right? Okay. All right. So, you're comfortable with what's going on?
So far.
So far, okay. Row, yes.
I do have another comment. Is it possible to close the hearing and condition these revisions and these reviews further?
No.
We have a closing on the property coming up.
I don't know.
I mean, the comments on the drainage and the note on the
All right. So, what kind of condition would we make on the drainage?
He agrees with Charlie.
Right.
Means Charlie rules.
I don't know what else to say. I mean, Charlie's
Yeah, now that I heard what he meant, I know I can do that.
So, the project proponent is agreeable to incorporating Mr. Rowley's comments
What about Evan's?
Into the plan? And change the zoning compliance table?
Okay. What about Evan's?
Right.
I would only ask the board, are you comfortable taking a vote on the application without reviewing a draft decision?
So, we can close the public hearing except for discussion on the draft decision. We can. We can close the public comment. We can close the public hearing except to discuss the draft decision with the project proponent at our next meeting.
Our next meeting is the 18th?
Row, are you requesting the board vote to either approve the project or to take action on the project?
Yeah, with those conditions that we just talked about.
I'm going to just go with So, so the project proponent is agreeable to incorporating Mr. Rowley's comments into the plan? And, and change the zoning compliance table?
Okay. But about Evans?
Right.
That was...
I would only ask the board, are you comfortable taking a vote on the application without reviewing a draft decision?
So we can close the public hearing, except for discussion on the draft decision. We can. We can close the public comment. We can, we can close the public hearing, except to discuss the draft decision with the project proponent at our next meeting.
Our next meeting is the 18th?
Well, I think, Raul, are you requesting the board vote to either approve, to approve the project? Or to take action on the project?
Yeah, with those conditions that we just talked about.
I, I, I'm gonna just go with it.
Okay.
I can, I can always write a decision that reflects your, that reflects the conditions, and I can make a quick copy of a signatory page. I would need a signature this evening or have a board member come into the town clerks tomorrow to sign the signatory page. If the board would like to do that.
They've been here a long time.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. I take, I accept a motion to close the public hearing?
So be.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the board is now gonna go into deliberation, okay? So, is there any additional comments from the board members? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the project as amended with two changes. One, that the, that the dimensions, the zoning compliance table is amended to reflect the proper verbiage regarding the undisturbed natural space. And two...
The drainage.
That, Charlie, what do you want us to say for the...
Drainage?
If, if... Let me look quickly and I'll, let me look at the plan quickly.
Well, the permit's going to cite the, the plan sheets. So I mean, you could, you can, does a condition need to be made? Should a condition be made that, I don't know how to do this without the decision being written. Because once I receive a revised sheet that Charlie approves of, I will just cite this sheet with the revision date within the permit. But it's kind of clunky doing it without the decision written out.
So would it be better to move it to the 18th, or...
So long as, so long as we agree that Raul and I can work out that little drainage issue there at that...
To ensure that the...
One spot, I would say approve the plan conditioned upon the receipt of a revised plan to show that change.
That the drainage...
It's acceptable, except for that one little spot that we're gonna take care of.
And you want, how do you want to describe that drainage, drainage going, going to where?
That the... The low point for the drainage area that is closest to Evergreen Circle will be modified to eliminate runoff toward Evergreen Circle.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Sound good.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would a member of the board come to the town clerk's office tomorrow to sign a a signatory page, and I will develop a draft decision to distribute to the board and show the applicant?
Is it Joe or Jack?
I'll do it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, could I just be excused for a minute just to talk about the, with Raul's, we're together on it?
Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing for Blue Sky Towers II LLC. Blue Sky Towers II LLC has made an application for a special permit to erect a personal wireless service facility as required by Section 174-25H9 and 174-453 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at 101 Red Brook Road, Mashpee Fire Station Number Two, Assessors Map 104 Lot Two, consisting of a 150-foot monopole. This public hearing is being reopened by the planning board following referral to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. This is the Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Pursuant to Mash General Law Chapter 48, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 4th, 2019, at 7:10 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road to consider an application by Blue Sky Towers II LLC for a special permit to erect a personal wireless service facility as required by Section 174-25H9 and 174-45.3 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. The property is located at 101 Red Brook Road, Mashpee Fire Station Number Two, identified on the Mashpee Assessors Map as Map 104 Lot Two. And this public hearing notice was submitted by Mary Wagon, Chair Mashpee Planning Board, and the publication dates were Friday, August 16th, 2019, and Friday, August 23rd, 2019. So, again, I'm gonna go through the process for tonight. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recognize the project proponent, okay? Project proponent is gonna have their time to make their presentation on this proposal. The chair will then, again, recognize the board members. I would like to take this time to remind planning board members that it's most advantageous to the town that board members wait to form or express opinions regarding this matter until substantial, if not all, public comment has been made. The chair will then recognize the town planner and the consulting engineer to offer comments on the matter. Then the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to provide and offer public testimony or comment. I'm first going to ask for comments for people who support the proposal, people who are neutral to the proposal, and then people who are opposed to the proposal. Just remember, you make all your comments through the chair. We may address your comments to the project proponent, our town planner, our consulting engineer, or take them under advisement. So, as some of you know, Blue Sky Towers II LLC had submitted a similar proposal to the planning board in 2018. That was subsequently withdrawn without prejudice. So, I just want to let the project proponent and anybody that's here and the public that if you had provided testimony or material or information during that public hearing, that public hearing is gone, that pub, that application is gone. So everything has to be submitted new to this application for the board to consider it. So if the project proponent, for example, told us something and, you know, they thought that we know it now, no. They have, it's their responsibility to give us all that information fresh from scratch, okay? I hope that's clear to everybody. Okay, so I will open it up to the project proponent.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Thompson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Towers II LLC. The proposal before you tonight is for a 150-foot monopole-type telecommunications tower to be located at the Mashpee Fire Station Number Two at 101 Red Brook Road in the town of Mashpee. As part of this proposal, we have Verizon Wireless proposing at 146 feet above ground level and T-Mobile at 136 feet above ground level. The town's emergency management system equipment will be located at 100 feet above ground level, and that will still leave room for up to two possible co-locators in the future of this facility. The equipment for the carriers and for the town will be placed at the base of the facility in a fenced-in compound. The proposal is a result of a request for proposals issued by the town of Mashpee. And this is important for several reasons. Number one, this allows the town to retain a greater level of control over the site than they would if it were a private landlord. Number two, it generates revenue for the town. And perhaps most importantly, it's indicative that the town, several years ago, was already well aware that there was a critical need for wireless service in this part of South Mashpee. They were aware of the need, and they identified this site behind the Mashpee Fire Station as the appropriate location for the siting of this facility. As part of the due diligence required by the applicant for any new tower proposal in any jurisdiction across the country, we have to identify if there are any alternatives that would be feasible to the current proposal. First, we look to existing towers. It makes sense financially for everyone, and as far as space and zoning approvals, if you can locate on an existing tower, that's where the carriers will go. If there are no existing towers within the search ring, and in this case, there are no existing towers within the search ring, which could accommodate the coverage gap of the two carriers proposed here tonight, then you would look to rooftops. If there are no rooftops available of sufficient height and location, then and only then would you look to raw land sites. And when you're looking to raw land sites, it really is our responsibility to make sure we have identified the only feasible location. In this case, we have identified the only feasible location. I'm fairly certain you will hear tonight about other proposals and suggestions of where we shall place this tower and, and what would be a better location. And I can tell you, as submitted in the documentation in the packet, there are none. One particular alternative that I would like to address right away is the location of a facility in New Seaberry, because this has come up during the proceedings, not only before this board, but the Cape Cod Commission and the zoning board of appeals as well. Verizon Wireless previously had an agreement many years ago to build a wireless facility in New Seaberry. Based upon internal relationships with New Seaberry and Verizon Wireless, that lease was terminated at the request of New Seaberry. Subsequently, before the issuance of this RFP, Verizon Wireless re-approached New Seaberry, seeking to gain knowledge whether they were interested at that time in a facility. And the answer was no, they're still not interested. Based upon the many comments that I've received during this process, I personally reached out to New Seaberry myself last month. And management has changed. So the initial answer that I received from New Seaberry was, we would be interested in hearing what, what the deal would be, what would be proposed, and where it would be placed, and how it would work. So in discussions, we identified one property that would potentially be feasible, just on a first glance look, to place a wireless facility. And when I pulled the titles to that property, I see that that property is under an agreement for judgment between the Cape Cod Commission and New Seaberry. And in that agreement for judgment, most of that property is under a conservation restriction. And what is not is under what is called a recreation restriction. And that recreation restriction means only recreational uses. So clearly, a wireless facility is not a recreational use, and for that reason, New Seaberry is ruled out. Again, the other alternatives that we reviewed are contained in the application package as Exhibit 15. As mentioned, this, this process began with the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. And the Cape Cod Commission in October of 2018 approved this project with some very reasonable conditions. I'd like to read you just two sentences from their approval. Their decision is contained as Exhibit 6 in your packets. "The Cape Cod Commission found, among other things, that, quote, 'without development of the project, the carriers cannot provide reliable service to the southern portions of the town of Mashpee pursuant to the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and their licenses issued by the FCC.'" On page nine of the decision, the DRI decision finds "the facility is appropriately located on municipal land and that there is sufficient existing forested area on the property to substantially obscure and limit views and to blend in with the natural environment to the greatest extent possible." "After approval of the development of regional impact, and once we learned through our research and the town's research that this property is not in the wireless overlay district, we sought and received a variance from the zoning board of appeals. By unanimous approval, they approved the tower height at 150 feet above ground level, finding that the minimal height necessary to close the significant coverage gaps for these two carriers before you." "A communications facility is unique because we have local regulatory approvals that are required, but we also have this umbrella law called the Telecommunications Act of 1996, or the TCA, as you will hear it being called." And I bring this up to the board because while a zoning board or a planning board is not required to take into consideration the TCA when they're determining whether to approve a facility, if it's not in compliance with the TCA, they can be, they can be overturned in federal court. In this case, this board is required to take the TCA under consideration because in the preamble to the wireless bylaw, it specifically states that it shall be in compliance with the TCA and that no denial shall effectively prohibit wireless service. And that's the key phrase, effective prohibition under the TCA. What does that mean? Effective prohibition means if there is a significant gap in wireless coverage and there are no feasible alternatives, then the facility must be approved. And that, that language comes from a body of case law in this First Circuit, federal courts where we sit, that was developed over many years. More recently than that, the FCC stepped in in an attempt to coordinate and, and really regulate what the standards for effective prohibition are. And I've, I've included the FCC ruling in your packet as Exhibit 16. And what they said is very, very important to this board. What they said is, if a denial would materially inhibit any range of services provided by a wireless carrier, then that is effective prohibition. So that means we're not talking only about a significant gap in 4G, 3G LTE service. We are talking about data. We are talking about densifying a network. We are talking about bringing new customers to a network. We are talking about improving coverage for subscribers who have petitioned for improved coverage. In this case, you're going to hear from the two radio frequency engineers that we have a significant gap in coverage. We have capacity issues. And we have a desire to bring new services as we all continue to use our wireless phones more and more. Before I turn the floor over to the radio frequency engineers, I would just note that you will hear tonight, I'm sure that there is substantial information that is submitted to this board from the residents of this area in South Mashpee, from public officials that I've heard throughout these proceedings, to say that this is not only a matter of convenience for this community. This is a matter of critical emergency life-saving operations. This is the proposal, this is the only feasible proposal, and this is the answer. And it is our duty to bring service to this area of South Mashpee. I'm going to ask Keith Valente, he's the radio frequency engineer for Verizon Wireless, to come up and describe what's going on here for Verizon.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Keith Valente with C-Squared Systems. Business address is 65 Dartmouth Drive in Auburn, New Hampshire. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless to discuss their network in the area of Mashpee and the need for the proposed facility.
It's the top one.
As part of the application, we prepared an RFP report directly to, to talk about Verizon's needs in this area. In that report, there's a massive map which I have displayed on the screen. And that helps visually explain, you know, why we're here today and how the proposed site fits with the Verizon network.
We have that as an exhibit?
Yeah.
Which exhibit is it?
It's Exhibit 9.
Okay, thank you.
Nine, and I'll win the other end.
Our technician is making sure that he's mic'd.
The mic is actually on the corner of the computer. If it can't be heard, you couldn't, you could hold it, just like a normal mini microphone.
Better?
I don't know. We won't know until she's back in the booth. So, I'm sorry, so it's Exhibit 9?
Yeah, at the back of Exhibit 9, there's a bunch of maps.
Okay.
And the, it's starting off with the first one.
Okay, thank you.
So to start, Attachment 8, it's entitled, "Existing 700 MHz LTE Coverage." And just to give you an overview of this particular map and the following maps is the, it's effectively focused around the Southern Mashpee area. In the brown hatch lines, those are the town boundaries. So you have Falmouth on the western side of the map, and Barstool in the northeastern corner of the map. Route 28 is, is in blue, coming in from the left side of the map, coming towards the center and up through the top of the map. And you have some of the secondary roads such as Great Oak Road, Great Neck Road, Rock Landing Road, and Red Brook, Red Brook Road going east-west across roughly the center of the map. In the lower right, we have a scale bar. It's one and a half miles. And shown on the map are locations of existing Verizon facilities in these areas. They're denoted by the pie-shaped wedges. There's, each site generally has three sectors of antennas. That's why there's three wedges on each particular site. So on the upper left, we have a site called Falmouth 2. That's over by the fairgrounds. That's a monopole facility, similar to what's proposed here. Moving into Mashpee, there's a site labeled Mashpee South. That's on Industrial Drive. It's a lattice tower where you have a kind of three, three phases of a tower and a lattice structure, which is different than the monopole. On the left side of the map, there's a site labeled East Falmouth. That's also a monopole. And that's over towards Mahoney's Garden Center. And then in the center of the map, in blue, is the proposed facility, 101 Red Brook Road. The heights are labeled below each, each site icon, so you can see... The heights are labeled below each site icon, so you can see the East Falmouth site is about 70 feet, and those are the Verizon antennas, not necessarily the tower height. The Falmouth 2 site, Verizon's at 140 feet. The site in Mashpee, the lattice tower on Industrial, that's Verizon's at 142 feet. And on the proposed facility, Verizon is looking to locate their antennas at 146 feet. So, you'll see on the map, in the green, kind of irregular shaded areas, that's the area of reliable coverage provided by those three existing Verizon facilities in the area. And as you can see, there's certainly coverage nearby those sites, but due to the distance away, and the topography of the area, and the tree cover and so forth, the coverage is going to degrade as you move away from the site. Eventually, it's going to get to a level that it just doesn't, it no longer supports reliable communications, and we have what we call a gap in coverage. So, the gap in this case is basically from Red Brook Road just north of it and all the way south towards the coastline. And that's really the gap that's of interest that the proposed facility is intended to fill. And if I go to the next page, this is Attachment B of Exhibit 9, and that shows the filling coverage from the proposed facility on Red Brook Road. In terms of distances, the proposed site covers 2.2 miles of Great Oak Road slash Great Neck Road South, covers one and a half miles along Red Brook Road, and it certainly covers a lot of the population in the area. Our calculations show that from coverage that's there today versus what would be gained from the proposed facility, roughly 1,400 additional residents would be covered with this proposed facility, that presently do not have coverage. So, that presents the filling coverage from the proposed site and how it just creates a more robust network throughout the area, fills in those coverage gaps. But nowadays, Verizon's continually challenged to keep up with the demand on their networks. It's not just filling in these gaps in coverage so that people can make phone calls like it was 10 years ago. Many people have multiple wireless devices, they're really indispensable parts of our daily lives, and the usage on these networks is just growing and growing. A recent report from the CTIA from 2017 to 2018, they indicated that wireless users grew over 82% in the United States. That's just in that one year, and it's continuing to go at that rate. So, it's important for Verizon to, you know, build their network to fill in these coverage gaps and also support the demand on the network. So, the next set of maps that I have, which are also part of Exhibit 9, these are slightly different. What we have here is we're showing in different colors the area served by a particular sector of a given site. So, on the Mashpee South site, we have an area in red, that's served by the sector facing the southeast. In orange is the sector facing roughly the southwest. And then in yellow, we have that southeastern-facing sector of the East Falmouth site. And what you can see is that they're covering large areas, they're starting to peter out because the coverage just gets so low as you head further south into New Seaberry. And what happens is you have a lot of usage in this poor coverage area, and it's trying to be served by these sites that are off in the distance. Mashpee South, for instance, that's located 1.4 miles north of the proposed facility. So, it's, you know, if you continue southward, it's really trying to serve almost over three miles, which is just quite a large area to serve, there's a lot of people in that area. And it's these users out on the fringe, they actually create more of a burden on the network because the coverage is at the fringe. If you had the same density of people closer to a site, the sites can serve those people much better. But when they're out towards the edge, there's a lot of overhead messaging involved to do the data transfers, and it creates an additional burden on the network. So, in addition to providing the improved coverage, what we show on this Attachment D here, as you can see, as I toggle, those areas in red, orange, and yellow, they kind of get absorbed by the area that would be served by the proposed site, which is shown in green on Attachment D. So, not only does the proposed site provide much better filling coverage, better service to any users in southern Mashpee, it also allows those existing facilities to kind of relax and better serve the users closer to them. So, it creates sort of a cascade effect that it's not just the users immediately around the proposed facility that benefit, those surrounding sites also benefit in the sense that they can better serve areas elsewhere. And the next map, I have all these irregular coverage patterns. In an area such as Mashpee, it's largely defined by the topography, so this is a map of the underlying terrain database that our modeling tool uses. And you can kind of see, you know, certainly by the coast in the bluer shades, that's going to be naturally the lower-lying areas. But you do have these, you know, hilltops or higher-level areas per se, and it's kind of somewhat of a rolling topography. And it's that rolling topography that's really going to limit those sites off in the distance from providing coverage this far away with those terrain obstacles. So, that's a quick overview of the Exhibit 9 that was prepared on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I'd be happy to answer more questions, but that's all I have for now.
Dennis, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Whoops.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Why is the East Falmouth pole only 70 feet tall, and the others are 140, 142 feet?
I don't know the history of the East Falmouth site. One comment I made is that the heights listed here, those are Verizon's antennas. Doesn't it necessarily mean the tower is 70 feet tall, it could be taller, or it's at least at that height, we can, I can tell you that. But it could be, it could be a taller structure with other carriers above. I don't know the specifics of how that site was permitted, that's just where Verizon is today.
Well, I was just, if that, the Verizon antenna were 140 feet on that pole, that would cover most of the uncovered area right now.
I don't, it would improve coverage to a certain extent, but you're not going to make up such a large gap in coverage simply by raising the antennas on that facility. As I mentioned, that East Falmouth site, that's pushing three miles away from the proposed facility, so any additional height, it is going to improve to a certain extent, more so in areas closer to the site, but not so much at such a distance away. And it all has to do with kind of the angles and the topography of the area. An analogy I try to use, it doesn't always work so well, is if, is if you're sitting at your desk here, and you look over the edge of your desk, okay, you can see the area on the floor closer to the edge of the desk. If you stand up maybe two or three feet, you're going to see more of that area closer to the desk, simply because the angle is much sharper. If you wheel your chair back 20 feet and stand up, you're not going to see much more of the floor over the edge, just because you're further away. So, that's kind of what happens when we talk about raising heights on sites that are off in the distance, it doesn't really fill in the gap of interest.
Well, I just thought, you know, if that pole were higher, you could probably fill in the gaps with the antennas that are on like telephone poles. You know what I'm saying?
Relay ones.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I stand by my answer, is that it would improve coverage somewhat. It's certainly not going to remove the need for the proposed facility. There would still be a substantial, quite a large substantial gap in coverage that's similar to what's shown up there on Attachment A.
Dennis, did you have a question?
On that second map you showed us, there's the white section in New Seaberry, and that's down there, the Shore Drive. And I had a lot of people down there telling me they want the cell tower because they don't get covered. But does that mean they still don't get coverage with the Verizon being up there at 140, 60?
No, 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 it doesn't mean there's no coverage. Maybe I glossed over this or didn't mention it at all. Where we show green and then white, it's not service, no service. What happens is the coverage is going to degrade, and it's going to kind of get to a point where it's no longer reliable by Verizon's standards. It doesn't mean the coverage just stops, it's just going to be not as reliable, so if we...
So, it's going to be where they are right now, not reliable where they are at that point?
Our modeling shows in this area of Pompaness that it's going to be a little bit below that reliability threshold. And if we go to this next map, this is a, what we're trying to do here is show the area served by the map, you can see that it is filled in. It's not going to be strong coverage, but there's going to be service there, and the service that is there would be provided by the proposed facility. And the reason for that area is, if you look at the map, is you have this high spot, then you have a shadow behind it. So, it's one of the challenges we face, we can't cover everything, there's always going to be some shadow.
All right, my second question, we're talking Verizon. A lot of people have T-Mobile or AT&amp;T. T-Mobile's going to be lower on your pole, are they going to get that same coverage, or I don't, do they have a map like you have, Verizon has a map, we have the white here, does T-Mobile, a lot of people may have T-Mobile, and they still may not be getting the coverage with that pole there, if I read these things right.
We will have T-Mobile's radio frequency engineer come up next and give his overview. We're not proposing AT&amp;T at this time, so we can't, you know, we can't tell you what that service would be in the future.
And I wanted to make sure people understand that this is Verizon antenna, and I have Verizon, so myself, I'm going to get better coverage now, I live down at the end.
Correct.
So, I'm going to, I get coverage now because I'm close to the Falmouth pole. I get coverage on the beach and everything, I don't, I have fine coverage. But all right, thank you.
I have a question, is that right?
Yes.
Like we were saying about earlier, that area's possibly under the service threshold, but it'll still be possibly working, so maybe not be able to do like videos, but like in a first responder safety issue, can I make a phone call? Would that be feasible?
The, the level of coverage to support a phone call is going to be less than streaming a movie. The coverage level, it's not always a direct correlation to data speeds and so forth, it depends on network loading, it depends on a number of factors, it depends on how many people are using it, what those users are doing at that particular time. It's, like I said, it's not a black and white, service, no service. It's just Verizon has to kind of come up with their, what's called a link budget. What we're showing on those first two sets of map is what they've determined is necessary for reliable 4G coverage in an area such as Mashpee. Shouldn't suggest that white areas, there's no coverage.
I would just augment too, that it's important to understand that, as Keith said, one site is not going to serve every deficient spot in the area, especially when you have a very large gap, it can only serve such a distance. In this case, I mean, the alternative is Verizon Wireless covering as much as possible at the minimal height necessary to do so, and knowing that going further, a further height is not feasible and would not cover those areas because of topography, or nothing at all. So, it really is up to the carriers to determine what is a realistic significant gap that we can cover with a pole, and does that mean it's going to be perfect in every location that there are white areas? Not yet, you know, they have a mandate by the federal government, regardless of population, cities, traffic, to cover every area, you know, as they can, so with reasonable speed. So, there's white, and eventually they'll have to come up with a secondary plan in the future to cover, to their standards.
Joe, any other comments?
That's it, thank you.
Jack, did you have any comments for this gentleman?
Nope, not yet.
Dennis, did you have another one?
One more thing. So, what you said in the beginning, the better site would have been in New Seaberry, because it would have covered everything then. In New Seaberry, someplace in New Seaberry was...
There was a proposal in New Seaberry, I certainly didn't say it would cover everything. I mean, there would still...
It seemed like it would, because it'd be a mile or quarter further into the area that we need to be covered.
It might have shifted, but it certainly...
How come you can't use the same law that you just stated, the FTC, that they can say, hey, we got to put this here, but in New Seaberry, if it was going to give them better coverage for the safety?
Well, there are certain requirements, and the very, very first one is there has to be a willing landlord, and in this case, we do not have a willing landlord. Other considerations for feasible alternatives under the TCA is conservation restrictions, use restrictions, or if it's financially prohibitive. In this case, with New Seaberry, I would, I would say that we have all of those factors making this a non-possible site.
Well, we have a, well, not just sanctuary where this cell tower's going.
But it is not within the sanctuary.
300 feet?
Excuse me?
I thought it was 300 feet, that it couldn't be within, at that site.
No, it's just within a boundary, designated boundary area, which means it's available for them to pursue negotiations to purchase, but it is not within a prohibited area.
Okay, it just don't make sense to me, but all right.
And that would be also in the final NEPA summary report, which is Exhibit 5.
Right, I'm just trying to look for the best place for this tower, and to be, cover everybody for the safety, you know, that's, okay.
All right, so Keith, right? Yep, okay, you all done?
I am, yes.
Okay. Oh, you have something else? Okay, good, Joe.
I just have one question. At the last selectman's meeting that they had on Thursday night, when I left the building, I was talking to somebody who was in the Home Owners Association in New Seaberry. And they said, I, he told me that they were in contact, and I thought he said Verizon about putting up antennas on the telephone poles.
Yeah, the relay thing.
And have you heard anything about that, or is that a different division, or...
I work for Blue Sky Towers, so I wouldn't have knowledge of what Verizon's plans there. I've certainly not heard anything to that.
He said they were talking about putting maybe 20 antennas. That would then cover all of New Seaberry-Pompaneset.
Yeah, and so I think Keith just explained that that would not cover all of New Seaberry-Pompaneset, and I would also refer you to, I believe it's at the back of Exhibit 9. Oh, no, maybe I put it as a summary here. Exhibit 10 is a letter from Keith on the feasibility of alternative technology and explaining why this type of alternative technology will not work. And I would also point you to Exhibit 12, which is a similar statement, no, I'm sorry, Exhibit 14 from T-Mobile, on why that alternative technology is not feasible for Verizon Wireless and T-Mobile at this location.
So, Keith, you don't work for Verizon?
No, not directly.
Okay.
This is all information from Blue Sky.
Well, no, the radio frequency plots are from the carriers, so Keith doesn't work...
He paid, he means, did you pay for that, those studies to be done?
I can't answer that question. I mean, there's a contractual agreement between my client and the carriers to locate on this tower if it's approved and it's built.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So...
Okay, but it's, I mean, but you, you put it in your application.
Correct.
Blue Sky Tower.
It's provided by the wireless service providers as mandated, the information certainly can't come from me. Keith is not in-house at Verizon, but he was contracted by Verizon to perform this, this service, which is very typical for our industry.
I'm sorry, did I muddle up that answer?
No, that, I was just, that was just something that was told to me at a selectman's meeting.
Certainly, if you need more information from Keith or Richard, who will speak for T-Mobile on why this alternative technology is not feasible beyond what's contained in the record, we'd be happy to provide that testimony.
Any other questions for Keith? Okay, so you have some other people that are going to speak?
We have two more. So, Richard Kariuki on behalf of T-Mobile Radio Frequency, and then briefly, I would like Mark Carenti from Fair Market Advisors, who's a certified appraiser, to discuss his report, which is contained in the packet.
I think we finally have the mics and the tables stuff all figured out.
But I'm still alone.
It's working out a little bit better than last time.
Good evening, my name's Richard Kariuki, and I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile, and here to present our site of 101 Red Brook Road in Mashpee.
1, 2, and 1. So, it's Exhibit 12 and 13.
Okay, so it's Exhibit 12 and 13.
And 14. 12 through 14.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's good. Renee, the clip is right down the computer.
Good evening again, my name is Richard Karaoke and I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. And I wanted to present to you what T-Mobile is looking to do in Mashpee. On the presentation right now, I'm showing what we have right now, the existing coverage. I'm showing like three sites. You know, we have existing sites, one, two, and three. And this location is the proposed site. And as you can see, the white part of the map is where we are lacking coverage. There's a big coverage gap. And what we are proposing, we are proposing to, to locate at 101 Red Brook Road at one hundred thirty-five feet. And as you can see, what T-Mobile coverage is going to look like when we propose to get it at one hundred thirty-five feet. So basically, it's the same thing as Verizon was showing, where we, we are lacking coverage. And when we put up that site, it's going to help us, you know, in Mashpee, have a major roads, Red Brook and also New Seaberry. As you're asking, someone was asking, most of this coverage you're seeing here is indoor, which is like in-building coverage. So when you say that most of the people are using their phones indoors, so when you look at that, that's indoor. So it doesn't mean, when you see the white here in New Seaberry, it doesn't mean you don't have coverage. You might have outdoor coverage, at the beach you have outdoor coverage. But mostly of this, we are showing like in-building coverage when inside the house. This is something we had been asked to do to show if we go lower on the height, which I think that's something different. But you know, if you go lower on the height on the tower, but you know, I don't think we need to show that. I'm going to show you another plot here. What I showed you before is seven hundred megahertz, which travel far than the twenty-one hundred. So on the twenty-one hundred megahertz, which capacity is for, you know, capacity for more users. We are showing, this is what we are showing right now. If we put on a new site, we're going to be able to handle more customers on our network for capacity. So what we are proposing here, we are proposing a four second site, you know, ninety, zero, ninety-one, eight, three seventy, which is going to help us cover, you know, you know, for capacity and coverage. And basically, you know, that's what I wanted to show you. On this slide, you know, which you have an exhibit, we are showing the yellow is outdoor or in-vehicle coverage. So we are showing without the site and with the site. So as I was, I was just telling you, if you build this site, you're going to be able to have like outdoor coverage, which is in-vehicle coverage in the whole of Southern Mashpee. Thank you very much. If you have any question, you can ask me and let me know.
So we'll start at the side, Joe, do you have any questions?
I don't want to start, thank you.
Jack?
Verizon provided the heights that they were on the other towers. Do you happen to know the heights you are on those other towers?
I have, I have the heights. Let me just go back and show you. So-
I know your proposal is one thirty-five, but on the other towers, where are they sitting?
Yeah, for the Mashpee cell site. We are at one hundred thirty feet. That's Korea Road, Farmwood, it's Farmwood. And we have one fifty-four Industrial Drive, one hundred sixty-five feet. And then we have this five-five-one-one C, which is right here. We are at ninety-three feet.
Oh gosh, you're going to have to say those again. So the five-one-one C is ninety-three feet?
Ninety-three feet.
The five-five-zero-B?
B, that's one hundred thirty feet.
Hundred and thirty?
Yep.
And the five-one-two-A?
One hundred sixty-five feet.
Hundred and sixty-five?
Yes.
And the proposed is one-
One thirty-five.
Thank you. Any other questions, Jack?
No.
Joe? Dennis?
No.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to have Mark Corenti from Fair Market Advisors. His report and supplemental letter are contained in Exhibit Seventeen. Yep, I think that one.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me well enough? Excellent, I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Mark Corenti. I am a certified residential appraiser with Fair Market Advisors. As I had mentioned, I had served on my own town's board and I-
Can you hear me back here?
How about now?
So I think what we need to do for the people in the back of the room is just talk as though you were speaking not into a mic. But we still need the mic because of the people at home. So, I mean, we still need both.
How about now? How about now? Okay, very good.
That's really good, thank you.
Sorry to the people at home if I'm yelling in your ear right now.
So can everybody hear him now?
He speaks too softly.
So I would just really speak at the volume I am, you know.
And the gentleman in the back is correct, I am from New Hampshire. I have never been told that I speak softly. I have references for that. Anyway, this evening, what I would like to do is, I assume that you all have my report, but I would like to highlight that report for you. Something a little different this time around. I want to present some of the comparable cell towers so that the public can also see them and assuming that you can also see them. So I will also give you the page numbers in the report if you'd like to follow and look around with that. The question before you this evening is how in granting the application impact property values? And how do we answer that? Before I respond to that, I'd like to preface my response by saying, an appraiser does not determine value. We measure it. The ones that determine value and the ones that are going to answer the question for you this evening are buyers. Buyers are the market makers. They are the one who put the money on the barrelhead and say, I like that feature, I like that location, I like that fact of your property and this is how much I will pay for it. As a property seller, you may have an opinion of your location, you may have an opinion of a property feature. Not that I'm trying to compare a cell tower to a swimming pool, but it is a classic example. Swimming pools awfully expensive to put in. However, what the market will pay for that is something that is quite different. So again, I do mention, you're, buyers are the one who are going to determine property value. All an appraiser does is observe, analyze, and measure. And that's what this report does for you this evening. So going back to the initial question, how do we answer the, the question, how in granting the application, how will it impact property values? Well, that's an easy question to answer. You do have cell towers in Mashpee. And what I've done in this report is I've visited those neighborhoods. I've analyzed the sales that have occurred and I've compared properties that have, or clear visibility to cell towers or approximate to cell towers. I've analyzed their sales to see what the health of that market, that property was, to see what it was. So I'll take you to page ten of the report. And what I would like to put up here on the screen so that the public may also view is some photographs I took. This is the Highland section of Mashpee. And this is Nine Nancy Lane. The driveway to Nine Nancy Lane is the, the white mailbox, excuse me, not on the left, but on the right. And you can clearly see the cell tower, the view that that property has. And what we do is we analyze that sale and you can see that in the table. Nine Nancy Lane is the bold in the middle. The median sales price in Mashpee is the top line. And we're not comparing this, this cape to all properties in Mashpee. What we're doing is, what a typical appraisal would do is, is it compares it to, to its peers, what it's competing with. So to give you an example, this is a two thousand and six sale that had a clear view of a cell tower. It listed for three seventy-four-nine, it sold for three seventy, which is the ninety-nine percent list to, to price ratio. It sold in forty-three days. Its peers, properties that are comparable to it, that it directly competes against, listed for three thirty-nine, four fifty, sold for three twenties, excuse me, three twenty-seven-five in eighty-seven days. To give you an idea of what was going on in Mashpee at that particular time, your median list price was three sixty-nine, your median sales price was three fifty-seven, and your median days on market, how long a property was on the market before it sold for that price, seventy-four days. As you can see, Nine Nancy Lane, which has a view of a cell tower, sold above its peers and it sold in a fairly quick period of time. Based on that particular sale, we're not seeing any mal effects. The next one I want to take you to is Twelve Windmare, same neighborhood. That's Twelve Windmare and you can see the cell tower in the back. It's eleven hundred square, excuse me, eleven hundred feet away, but there's clear visibility of that tower. That particular property, as you can see, listed, again, this is a two thousand and ten sale, completely different market. If you were a homeowner during two thousand and ten, you know what you were experiencing then, so the property values are a little different. But the point is, is that it listed for two eighty-nine, sold for two fifty-two. It's an eighty-seven percent list to sales ratio. It sold in eighty-eight days. Bottom line, its peers would have competed against, listed for two fifty-four-nine, sold for two forty-five in eighty-three days. Again, it does not appear that that view that you saw had any mal effect on the sale of that property. I have two others to show you. This one's one fourteen Dover Road. It is the house on the right. You can see the cell tower on the left. This property was a little unique in the sense that it had a in-ground swimming pool. Regarding the solar panels, I did some research on that. This is a two thousand and fifteen sale. Those solar panels were added after the sale, so they, they weren't a, a factor in the purchase decision on that. To be fair, since this property has an in-ground pool, we compared it to other properties that also have in-ground pools. So this property listed for three sixty-nine-nine, it sold for three sixty, it sold in thirteen days. Other properties that are similar in size, age, square footage, also had in-ground pools, listed for three fifty-four, four fifty, sold for three fifty-nine, nine fifty. There's a fifty dollar difference there. And again, there's a cell tower. The last property in this neighborhood is Two Oxfordshire Place. This is a photo that I took. You can see the cell tower. I am standing at the bottom of the driveway of this property. This property was a two thousand and fourteen sale, listed three seventy-four-nine, sold for three seventy in seventeen days, way ahead of the market on days on market and list to sales ratio. What I showed you is a quantitative review and analysis of a neighborhood that has a cell tower in it. I also supplemented my report with a qualitative review of surveys and responses from assessors, appraisers, and real estate agents. I dropped into your assessing office and I inquired if had anyone in the town of Mashpee had ever filed for a tax abatement due to their property being proximate or have a view of a cell tower. I waited a little bit and then a gentleman came out, it was Mr. Jason Strebel, and he had asked me why I was inquiring. I had introduced myself as an appraiser and he said, well, I'm not at liberty to share with you tax abatement applications, but I can tell you in my tenure on the Board of Assessors in Mashpee for fourteen years, not one person has filed for a tax abatement, a reduction in taxes due to proximity or view of a cell tower. So based on that, what the data is showing, what the buyers are showing, and again, you can have an opinion of a, of a property feature, but the question before you is how in granting the application, is it going to impact property values? The person who's answering that are buyers. It is the next person that is willing to buy your home. And in viewing these sales, there are buyers out there that are just non-pulsed regarding the, regarding the feature. They are paying full price for these properties in a quick amount of time. So based on the data that I'm seeing in Mashpee of neighborhoods that have cell towers in them, there's no mal effect. I had written a letter in response and that letter was dated June thirteenth. It was regarding some material that was submitted to the board. I do believe it was printed off the internet. This letter, I do believe, would be helpful in your deliberations. I just want to spend two minutes going over it. Some of the material that came forward, one was from the National Institute for Science Law and Public Policy and the other one was a cell tower study from Christ Church, New Zealand. And the letter dated June thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The National Institute for Science Law and Public Policy had conducted a survey and I do believe the results of that survey was that ninety-seven percent of people would never buy or live in a home that is close to a cell tower. The question that that survey is asked, asking is completely different from what we're presenting here. And I would like to read to you the question that was in the survey. "The survey, which circulated online through email and social networking sites in both the U.S. and abroad, sought to determine if nearby cell towers and antennas or wireless antennas placed on top of or on the side of a building would impact a home buyer or renter's interest in a real estate property." The proposed tower on Red Brook Road is not going to be on anyone's home or attached to anyone's home. It's going to be on thirty-six acres in a wooded section of, of the parcel. So I do believe that that survey is asking a question that is quite different than what is being proposed here. The other study from New Zealand, in New Zealand, they don't call them cell towers. They call them CPBSs, cell phone base stations. So wherever there's a reference to a CPBS, I'm going to interface that with cell tower. That study said that there was a twenty percent decrease in value for properties that are approximate to a cell tower. That was published in the Appraisal Journal, which I have a copy and subscribe to. Page two seventy-one of the article, limitations of the research. "The main limitations affecting this survey was in the selection of the case study area. Specifically, the areas selected that had cell towers were not highly visible to residents." Page two sixty-seven, "Thus, views were not included in the analysis. Further, due to the large number of sales included in the analysis, inspection of each individual property were not made to determine the view, if any, of a cell tower from each house. Hence, views of cell towers was not included as an independent variable." The study concluded that there's a twenty percent drop in values. However, it did not take into consideration if a property has a view of a cell tower. So I'm not too sure what they're measuring. But what I wanted to point out to you in your deliberations is there is a difference. That New Zealand study does not take into consideration where a property is located or if it even had a view. The study that I presented to you are properties that are in Mashpee, they're not in New Zealand, which is about nine thousand miles away. And the views of cell towers are photographs that I took that you can see. Those are properties that have sold, that do have a view of a cell tower. And as the data has provided, those homes were selling at, at prices comparable to their peers. If there was an impact on value, the New Zealand study said a twenty percent decrease in value, you would see it. A twenty percent decrease in value on these properties in Mashpee that I showed you would be anywhere from sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars. That's something that's noticeable. I was having a conversation with an appraiser in my office today and we were debating something about two, three thousand dollars. And I just said, you're not that good. No appraiser's that good. You, you're not that accurate to the point that you can tell a grander to. But you can tell the difference between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. So if there was a measurable impact on value, you- So if there was a measurable impact on value, you would see that drop. The sensitivity analysis, it just doesn't exist that there is an impact on the values. Might you folks have any questions?
I have a question. On these comparables, like 114 Dover Road?
Yes.
The one below, is that in the same area? Or where's that comparable? You don't give address.
Those comparables are properties that are not proximate to a cell tower. You're trying to solve for a variable. That variable is the view of a cell tower.
Okay, I see what you're making the difference.
Yes.
I probably didn't understand.
Not a problem.
Okay.
The two towers that are in the pictures, you know height of the towers?
I do believe one of the towers was on Industrial Drive.
Both of them are, but do you know the height of them?
One was, I want to say 150.
Yeah, it was 200. 300.
So how many did you have a question? No. No, Jack, do you need additional questions?
One was 250. And I want to say the other one was 150.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I think that's where Verizon's point is.
Okay. I don't have an answer to that question for you. What I was trying to present in the photographs was for you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just curious, does your firm do any other market studies involving cell towers?
Yes. Good, bad, and ugly.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would conclude our presentation. We're happy to answer. Any questions from the board?
I was wondering if you had anybody to present the photographic simulation.
We could certainly walk through the photographic simulations.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. So I was just wondering if they were going to make a presentation on the photographic simulation package.
I can certainly walk us through the photo sims.
Okay.
So here you're looking at the area where the photographs were taken. And if you look...
Oh, Mike.
Is he in the mic?
So she said, "Here is the map that shows where the photos were taken."
How's this? Any better?
Well, just keep talking. Yep, it says green. Go.
Great. So with this map, we're looking at the areas where the photographs were taken are numbered. The areas with the green are the photo locations where the balloon was visible. The areas with the yellow, which is really just number one, is photo location, the balloon was visible, but there was obscured visibility. In the red, the balloon was not visible. So those numbers are going to correspond to the next photographs in the packet. So our first photograph is from 126-216 Red Brook Road, and there's obscured visibility. You can see in the center of the photograph, you can see a little bit of the red balloon there at the top. Please tell me if I'm going too fast.
Nope.
So here is a rendering of that same photograph, but now you can see that they've put the tower where the red balloon was. They've put the simulation there, so you can slightly see the top of the tower from this location. And that's at 150 feet. Per the Cape Cod Commission regulations, they asked us to also show what the rendering would look at 125 feet. So here is what the visibility would be from that location at 125 feet. We're on page five. Moving to page six, this is from the front of the Mashpee Fire Station. You see the red balloon at 150 feet, and the yellow balloon is at 125 feet. Here is the rendering with the two proposed carriers. And per the Cape Cod Commission's request, we also showed what it would look like if it was fully loaded, so to speak. And again, on page nine, we have what it would look like at 125 feet. And this, again, per the Cape Cod Commission request, they would like to see what it would look as a monopine or faux tree.
Yeah, I like them.
And here it is. Okay, here we have 95-103 DeGrasse Road. You can see the balloons in the background there. This is with the two proposed towers, so this is the proposal before you. And there's with the four potential carriers. And again, at 125 feet. Again, just to show you some different design alternatives, this is what the tower would be looking like if it was painted a light gray. And here, a light blue. And again, is the tree. And this picture, it's hard to distinguish, but there was a request to show the tree with the branches brought all the way down to make it look more like a real tree, if possible. And so that's what this is rendering. Now here, we have 56 Blue Castle Drive. You can see the balloons. 150 feet with two carriers, fully loaded. 125 feet. We're getting... Oh, this is the gray, the gray rendering. The light blue. The glorious tree. And with the branches brought all the way down. 48 to 56 Blue Castle Drive was not visible. 1182 Great Hay Road, not visible. 66 Red Brook Road, not visible. 701 Great Neck Road South, not visible. 56 Sips Road, not visible. 664 Great Neck Road South, not visible. 577 Great Neck Road South, I believe that's the Children's Museum, not visible. 5 Driftwood Way, not visible. 112 Summer Sea Road, they are calling this year-round visibility. It's hard to tell at this scale, but you can slightly see the balloons in the background across the water there. Again, this is the 150-foot pole. It's very hard to see, but you can see it a little bit. Polaris Drive, not visible. And those are the photo locations. I would note that all of these locations were chosen initially by Blue Sky, and then in consultation with both the Town of Mashpee and the Cape Cod Commission staff, both the Town and the Commission submitted additional photo locations that they would like to see, which were then incorporated into the photo simulation package.
Okay. I don't have any comments on them at this time. Does anybody have any comments? The last thing...
So I was just saying, the chair was just saying that I didn't have any comments. It seems that no board members have comments regarding that at this time. The NEPA screening report, weren't there photo, wasn't there a map showing photos in here, too?
It's not contained in this report. We did, they do, as part of NEPA, they have to do a separate analysis based on historic homes. It will tell you in here that there was no issue with any historic properties, photo locations, or visual impact.
Can you provide that to us? Because I thought there was a question about the direction of the camera at one of the historic homes.
And so the historic homes are also contained in that photo simulation package. I believe I've got a corresponding chart. We can certainly provide the entire NEPA with all of the pictures. It's about 450 pages, but it could certainly...
Could you electronically?
Yep, sure.
Yeah. That's great.
Yeah, so just for clarification, I think this will help a little bit with the package. Some of the locations that were specifically requested because of potential impact on Native American sites and other historic homes. The Aiken Gertrude House was photo location number seven, or also known as the Princess Evening Star House at 66 Red Brook Road. It was not visible.
Okay.
The Amos Horatio House, photo number eight, 701 Great Neck Road South, not visible. The Children's Museum was of concern, as was the landing off of Driftwood Way, not visible.
All right, so that's your presentation at this time?
That is our presentation at this time.
Okay. So it is 8:45.
We gotta open it.
Well, I was wondering how, I do have comments, but I was wondering if we should let the public go first? Or do you want to have the, typically I have board members go next, then the town planner, then the engineer, but I can tell we're losing a few. I didn't know if we wanted to take public comment now?
Take the public comment.
Is that okay with everybody?
Okay.
I need to know that there's consensus, that I'm changing the routine, that I, okay. All right, so if there's anybody here tonight from the public that would like to speak in favor of this proposal, please come up. State your name and your address, and then your comment.
I can speak pretty loudly. Do I need the...
If you want to be heard at home, yes, you need to put the mic on or hold it up to your...
Take that one. Yeah, I see you.
Anyone who's next?
My name's Tom Rose. I'm a captain with the Mashpee Police Department. I've been on the department serving for 18 years, and I can tell you, Salt Mashpee is notoriously awful for not only cell service, but radio communications as well, portable radios. More recently, I was working the day of the microburst. I was down there, one of the first responders down there, and I had zero cell service. I was called to call the station via cellphone, no service. And we were trying to coordinate rescue efforts. So from a public safety standpoint, I can tell you it's imperative that we get some kind of cell tower in that area because it's vital to public safety communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Directors of the Board, my name's Howard Cahalas. I live in Mashpee and also in Boston. And until tonight, I really didn't realize it was an us-against-them issue. I don't pay taxes to New Seabree. I pay taxes to Mashpee. And I heard today, "Well, that's not a Mashpee problem." I think it is. And I agree with the previous speaker. I couldn't find my grandchildren on the day of the microburst. There was no cell service, none. We don't have a landline. The police can't communicate. And I'm just curious as to why these meetings are scheduled after the summer, when New Seabree people go home. Is that purposely? I don't know. So, I'm not a year-round resident, but I've been here 35 years, and I do, as I said, my wife and I and the children and my grandchildren pay taxes here. We don't have kids in the school system. We don't complain about that. We are entitled to cell service, not because we're in New Seabree, but because that is a safety issue, and I agree 100%. And I think anybody in this committee that does not vote in favor is breaching a fiduciary relationship. And I, God forbid, somebody gets hurt or dies, as a personal injury attorney, I'd be the first one on the scene, not to go after the Town of Mashpee, but board members that didn't vote. You can shake your head. I understand how you feel.
Thank you. Please don't...
That's all right.
But anyways, don't make it personal, okay?
It is personal. You're breaching a fiduciary duty. I've seen nothing here tonight to show why you wouldn't vote in a cell tower.
So I'm assuming that you're in favor of this.
Gee, that's very good, yes.
So please say that for the record.
Pardon me?
You must be a good lawyer, Joe.
Well, what are you?
Okay, all right.
I am in favor for the record.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
And if anybody here doesn't realize that aesthetics versus safety, that I don't understand life, this is 2019. It's not 1950.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So anybody else from the public that would like to? And I just want to let you know, if you clap now, there's going to be other people clapping later, and I'm not going to stop them. So if you clap now, fine, but you're opening up a can of worms to allow clapping later on, okay? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Gregory McCalvy, 11 Mission Road in Mashpee. I'm a year-round resident. I'm also a member of the Town Finance Committee, for full disclosure. I moved here to Mashpee in 2010, and we live in Popinasset, and immediately noticed a lack of cell service. But that didn't keep us from moving there. We moved there anyway. My in-laws also live one street over, and if you live at home, you can get cell service if you have Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi can connect to your phone lots of times. You can get cell service, or you have what's called a cell booster. That works, too. But when you lose power and you don't have any of that, you're really stuck. Not only are you stuck from a standpoint that you can't make a phone call, you can't text to anybody. If you're walking down Shore Road, you can possibly send a text out, but you might get a phone call, but the minute you pick it up, it's going to drop. And that's a difficult thing. Power goes out not only during microbursts and storms like that, but also during snow events in that area. And there are a lot of year-round residents there that are a little older than me, who own oxygen and things like this, that have a hard time, you know, getting out and moving around, and if they can't make a phone call, then they have a problem. But this summer, when we had the microburst, it was really significant. You could really see people struggling. They came out in the streets trying to find a cell signal. It was difficult for people to, you know, couldn't make a, you couldn't call the fire department, the police department, ever source, let alone get an ambulance. And it definitely is an issue of public safety, and I am for the cell tower, and I'm hoping that you folks will give it every consideration. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Maureen Holland. I live at 77 Uncle Percy's Road. I was there for the microburst, sitting in my living room all by myself, looked out the window, saw nothing. My house was bombarded with, I didn't know, I couldn't see. When it ended, I went outside. I couldn't get out. There were trees that were felled crossing my way, couldn't get out. I looked up and down, different ends of the street. There was no passage. A policeman asked if I was all right. I said I was, but was I? If anything had happened, how would I have gotten out? I was alone. I was not safe. We need a cell tower.
My name is Denise Peterson. I also live in Popinasset. I was also there the day of the microburst, and I was, could not get any cellphone, so I couldn't call for emergency services where they needed. 10 minutes after the cell burst, it was a beautiful day, but I was very afraid. All the kids came out as soon as the sun came out. There were trees, branches, everything hanging. If any of those small children had been hit by a branch, I couldn't call in any fashion to get any type of emergency care. My landline, which I have maintained, is now through my modem. I don't have the regular old-fashioned telephone lines into the house, so my landline was also of no use to me. So for the, you know, safety of all people concerned, I, even during the best of times, I cannot make a cellphone call from the back of my house. My house is only 900 square feet. I'm not talking about a McMansion that goes back and back and back. It's a small house. It's a safety issue. Please vote for the cell tower.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening. Leland Muldowney, 109 Waterway. I'm in favor of the cell tower. I'm fortunate enough to be able to telecommute when I'm not in the office, and, you know, it inhibits my ability to earn a living when I can't work from home and have the proper connections, both, you know, and proper phone calls. We have multiple devices. And I also think it would potentially hurt our home values if, you know, if prospective buyers know that there's no cell coverage. I certainly, and that's not a question that I asked before, so like I said, it would impact my ability to work from home, and I know a lot of people in the community come down on weekends, they come down on Fridays and stay on Mondays, but yeah, so it impacts my ability to make a living. Thank you.
Hi.
How are you? I promise to be brief. My name is Scott Vetsde, and I live at 135...
My name is Scott Vetsde, and I live at one thirty-five Paddock Circle. I've been in Mashpee for twenty-two years, I love it here, grew up on the Cape. My parents are in their eighties now, not their sixties, when they used to come visit, and they love coming up and staying with us for a couple months over the summer. My mother's on dialysis, and I worry, again, about a safety issue, if she's up here and, and nobody can get through to her, or she can't get through to public safety. Thank you, I'm obviously in, in favor of the cellphone tower.
Thank you. All right, is there somebody that just is neutral, has a question? Did I miss anybody in that first section? This gentleman in red that's coming up? Okay.
I'm Bill Peterson, usually I don't need a mic, I talk very loudly, I'm told. I was there when the microburst took place in Poppanesset, and it was, it was absolutely unbelievable, and it came, I swear, right over my house because the wind was coming from the left of the house, the back later, the right side, and then the front, so that meant the eye went pretty much right over my house. My trees on the front, the side, and, and the other side of the house, the tops were being broken off and thrown down on part of my roof, on, on the front lawn, on the streets in front of my house and everything, and, well, my, my wife has already given a spoke about that, and the trees and the limbs, and the, she was right, about the children, right afterwards, the sun came out, and these lovable little children were out there on their bicycles and looking around and everything, and I'm looking up in the tree, and there were still wind currents coming, I could see the trees bending, but the kids were out because the sun was out, which, they're on vacation in most cases, and, in that village at that time of year, and they're unfamiliar, being young, of what was going on, for some reason, and those branches were waving, and I was terrified, the fact that those branches might come down on one of those children. I, I, I almost was in tears, I, I ran out and I tried to clear the branch, the, the kids away, and I, I stopped them from coming down my street, and it was, it was terrible. And it, and, we have to have better availability of communication in that particular area. It's been going on since I was a child, I've been there since I was nine years old, I, years upon years, and nobody's ever thought or done anything about taking care of us down in the village. We're just second-hand citizens, as far as I can tell, nobody cares about us. About time somebody starts thinking about these people that vacation or own places near the water, you know, just because we're not, in most cases, full-time residents, now I have, we've actually moved down here full-time because my wife and I have retired, and it's, it's a piece of heaven, that's the way I look at it. Well, it, sometimes it's like hell when something like that happens, and we, for three days, we didn't have any communication. I mean, during that period of time, there were so many things that could have happened, and, and we had, and some of the, most of the roads going in there, for the first day, were, you couldn't even drive out if something happened, if somebody, somebody went in there and, and, or was injured in there, I, for, for a long period of time, almost the full part of that day, they didn't have the road, all the roads cleared. I took a walk around that village, and there were trees and things all over that road, and you, you, you gotta have some sort of communication, what if, maybe if you needed, you could get a helicopter in there, but how do you call the helicopter? You know, there's, there was nothing we could do, and, and you, I felt lost of the situation, and I'm a, I'm, I'm a retired full-time enforcement officer, I was, I am a police officer, and, and I, I've been, I'll even, in safety for so long, and that, what should be provided for people? It's part of my prior job, and it's not being provided by this town, for our area at Poppanesset. And I think it's about time it is something that is done about, if you don't mind. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, I hear there was a microburst that happened.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk about that. Hi, I'm Marlene Perkins, eight Bow Split Point, and everyone's been talking about the microburst, which was a unusual search, situation, we may never hopefully have one again, but what people haven't talked about is the beach. There are kids, families, everyone on the beach all summer long, and there is zero cell service, God forbid, a drowning, a heart attack, any type of situation, the lifeguards can't call out, people can't call out, and that's a really serious situation that affects the whole community on the beach everywhere. So, thank you, I'm, I'm in favor of the cell tower.
Okay, good. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony in favor of the cellphone? Not a, if not, I'll go to people who just want to ask some questions, or don't have any opinion. Otherwise, we'll go to, is there anybody here that has concerns or opposed to the proposal? Hi.
Lorraine Michelson, one ten DeGrasse, andrea DeGrasse Road, and first thing that I would like to say is, the people that are, myself, I can't speak for others, the reason we are opposing the cell tower is not that we don't believe that the people in Poppanesset or New Seaberry should have the service, absolutely we believe that. It's the placement of the cell tower that we are opposed to. I have a question, if they've ever considered placing it on the Highview Water Tower to get all the service that is needed down there? I know that you said that you've done other areas, and there was not a willing landlord, and I believe that's the key words, a willing landlord. Everybody in here who lives in Poppanesset or New Seaberry, has, have you asked New Seaberry to be willing to have it on their, their water tower? We're not willing to have it on our backyards, there's some issues that we cannot speak about regarding health, there's new issues regarding lawsuits that are coming up in California, they're suing cellphone service places because it's now coming evident that it's a health-safety issue, and I believe that the appraiser didn't take that in consideration with his values, the, I believe the latest value that he had was from two thousand and fifteen, these are all new issues that have, I'm just learning about now, with health issues and property values, it's not, it's two thousand, or nineteen fifty, like he stated, it's two thousand and nineteen, there were no examples of present sales with cellphone towers available. Another item that I would, would like to ask is...
Where is this Highview Water Tower?
Highview, the Highview section of New Seaberry?
I would.
I, I don't know if there's anybody else that has more information on the... One eleven Rock Landing Road. Do we, Mashpee Water District, I guess, owns it? I'm being told?
So, whoever's yelling that out, you're going to have to come up and give me that testimony by mic?
Sorry.
So, I'm just letting, yeah, get in line, and, and just give me that by mic, so everybody at home and our recording secretary can, you, I, I don't know, if, I don't know if you should, cut Terry, but...
I would just like to say on record that I, as a direct abutter to the proposed cell tower, I am not opposed to cell towers, I am not opposed to the need for cell tower service in Poppanesset or New Seaberry, I'm opposed to the location that they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Okay. So, you are going to give us some information about this water tower?
Yes, I have the details, so it's one, Dana Roberts, seventy-five DeGrasse Road, so the address that I have is one eleven Rock Landing Road, and it's owned by the Mashpee Water District, it's sixteen point five acres, which is about a thousand by a thousand square feet, so I think that would provide ample space to put either a tower somewhere on that part of the land, or you could put it on top of the tower, so I think that's located just south of the driving range and just east of Poppanesset. And the important thing about that piece of land is that it's elevated, so, you have about forty to fifty feet of elevation there, and it sits right on top of that hill, which is causing all of the issues really for that northern cell tower to reach those areas. And the most important thing about that is that I think that cell tower would hit all the areas in Poppanesset that doesn't have that coverage. And I actually broke it down, I used the map that they provided, and the maps that they provided was going to leave about four hundred houses without reliable service, which is about twenty-five percent of New Seaberry. Just a couple other points I wanted to make, the maps that they're putting up there with their radio frequencies and the coverage, I noticed that they're putting New Seaberry over DeGrasse Road, the label for it, which is completely off, I don't know if that's just manipulation, or it's just, that's not where New Seaberry is, so I don't know if they're trying to make the point that this is going in New Seaberry, but it seems like they're trying to play around with the maps there a little bit. And then, one of the question I had was about the independent RF engineer, I know that that was brought up in the previous hearing, I don't know if that's going to be readdressed here at some point?
I'll ask the board if they want to hire a consultant.
Okay, I, I think, I mean, I think that would be, that would be the right thing to do, since we're really just going off of their maps, so they're the ones that want to really put it up here. One more point, too, I noticed she mentioned that they were seeking alternative sites to put this tower, which I don't know is completely true. So, I read the, the RFP for this, and it specifically mentioned putting a tower at the fire station site. It didn't mention about, they didn't respond to the RFP about putting it anywhere else or covering the cell service in New Seaberry, it was specifically about putting it at the fire station site, which I don't think is, should be the main priority here, should be covering New Seaberry. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, will you give me an opportunity to respond to some of these?
So, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to let you respond at the end. Anything that gets submitted tonight, I'm going to make sure that the Town Planner gets that to you, I, I mean, from what I'm saying now, I think you can take the hint, I'm going to want to continue the public hearing, so that...
Well, "we," don't say "you," "we."
That's my opinion, sir, and that's my recommendation, and that's why I said, I...
Okay.
I was only hoping to answer...
Jack always corrects me, and I'm not happy with that.
That's unfortunate, because it's "we."
And if he, if he interrupts me again, I'll consider it, you know, interfering, and I will ask, I will ask somebody to remove you, so please stop. It's, it's difficult enough to stop, speak in front of a hundred people without, you interrupted me on my side, okay? So, I forget what we were talking about, but...
I was just, I was proposing to respond to the individual because they're coming so fast that I feel like I'll be able to answer, and the audience and the board will be understanding of what...
I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate, because I think they should be able to speak all in a row, and then you will have the opportunity to either respond tonight, or at a continued hearing, that's what I'd, I'd like to do that. Go ahead, Terry.
My name is Terry Ronhock, I'm eighty-two Sunset Circle, I also own property at one oh four DeGrasse Road. I've been to every single meeting on the cell tower, every single Cape Cod Commission meeting, I've been to every meeting, I've seen every map, I've looked at all the materials, and, so, one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight was, we, we, you know, we're, I don't think anybody is questioning the fact that people in New Seaberry and Poppanesset need proper cell service, that's not the question. The question is, is this the project, is this the proposal that will solve that problem in the best way? And so, one of the things I wanted to bring up is talk about another alternate proj, project. So, the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six that Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson brought up, leaves in place the authority of the local zoning authorities over placement of personal wireless facilities. It requires that denials be based on a reasoned approach, and a common reasoned approach for denial is failing to use existing structures and infrastructure within the general service area of the proposed tower that could be used in lieu of a new tower. And I think Mr. Roberts brought up the, the water tower, that was also an alternate, but I, I would also like to talk to the board tonight about the outdoor distributed antenna system. Now, I know I've spoken, I spoke at the Cape Cod Commission about this, I spoke at the Zoning Board of Appeals about this. So, the outdoor distributed, distributed antenna system is a small cell system that is attached to existing telephone wire, existing telephone poles. And if you, if you got a chance to really look at some of the maps that were presented tonight, you can see that coverage would be improved for a great amount of wooded area. When you look at, when you look at those maps, you see the cluster of streets in the bottom corners that are still in the white areas, but there's great improvement for, for coverage in those wooded areas, so squirrels and, you know, all the chipmunks will have great coverage, but we're still not seeing a hundred percent coverage for those people in those really well-developed areas close to the water there, particularly, I think, Poppanesset. So, the outdoor distributed antenna system is a system that would provide both coverage and capacity to address those coverage area, those, those areas that are lacking by a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower that's located too far away from the service area. So, yes, the outdoor distributed antenna system was proposed to the New Seaberry Peninsula Club in, over two years ago, and that system, and I'm, and I know that, you know, Mr. Richardson, Michael Richardson, who's the director of the New Seaberry Peninsula Club, and also on the Finance Committee, could probably attest to that proposal that was brought to them to set up an outdoor distributed antenna system for the New Seaberry area. So, this system would not only improve coverage for that area, but it's a, it's a system that improves safety, because this system triangulates off of the, the poles, it doesn't triangulate off a tower, it triangulates off the individual cells. The other thing about this system that needs to be considered is, it can be updated, unlike a monopole. So, when we went to the Cape Cod Commission, I brought this system up several times. At one of the meetings, David Maxim, who worked, who did the, who was the independent technician that was hired by the Cape Cod Commission to review this project, was asked about the, you know, the outdoor distributed antenna system, and he said that he was hired to review the monopole system, he was not hired to review the outdoor distributed antenna system, but he said that the system was technically feasible, but it was burdensome cost to the carriers. But when the proposal was set, was given, the residents of New Seaberry, or any area that needed to be covered, were told that the, the cost of this would be a hundred percent covered by the carrier, there would be no additional cost to residents. But in a, in a phone interview with Mr. Maxim, he said that this was technically feasible. So, at the Cape Cod Commission meeting, I brought it up several times. At one time, when Mr. Maxim was not able to attend a meeting, Jonathan Ideman, who was the chief officer for the, for the proposal, said that these systems could not be used on Cape Cod, they could only be used in large cities, and that they could not be used without a tower. But when we met for the final meeting of the Cape Cod Commission, we met with all the members, and the member Cheryl Andrews from Provincetown, she got up and she said, "Why aren't you considering an outdoor distributed antenna system? We use these in Provincetown, and it works great without a tower." But she asked why it wasn't being considered, her, her question was never answered, and it went for vote, and she and two other members voted against it, but it was, they had enough votes to pass. So, that question is still in the air, why isn't it, why isn't it being considered? Why wasn't it being considered? So, this, this tower is proposed for the safety of the people in New Seaberry, but if the outdoor distributed antenna system was... But if the outdoor distributed antenna system was accepted, it would have been over two years ago. That system would have been in place easily, perhaps by the summer of two thousand eighteen, easily by this past summer. So I know these systems are being used in other Cape Cod towns, Provincetown, Dennis. I don't know if other towns on the Cape are using it. I have talked to some installers who said they're installing them around the Cape. I mean, maybe that's something the town planner could check on for, for other Cape towns, whether these systems are being used. But that is an alternate system that should be considered before this monopole is considered because the monopole, the distance from the service area is too great to completely cover it. And the coverage area that they are gaining from this is wooded area, the greatest amount of the coverage for that. And the other issue that I wanted to bring up was the emergency radio repeaters. Now, I know we have said, there has been said before that we need this hundred-and-fifty-foot cell tower because we need extra coverage for our EMS system. But at the town meeting, we brought up, well, if there really was need for extra repeaters, why hadn't this been brought up previously? In fact, the town has the authority, the legal authority, to place repeaters anywhere at any time to cover gaps. We don't need a hundred-and-fifty-foot cell tower to put a EMS repeater anywhere to cover, to cover areas where EMS officials can use walkie-talkies or whatever other communication they use. And so on the subject of safety, as far as the people in this area, there, you know, we, we all know that there were several proposals put up previously. Alma Road was put up as a previous site, but that site was denied because the people in that area are concerned about their property values. And they, the New Seaberry has under Architectural Review Committee, they have the right to put up any system without very little approval from any town boards. So to, to rely on this hundred-and-fifty-foot cell tower and that, this proposal that's rife with problems, not the least of which is that it's not zoned or that we voted against it at town meeting, to put all the safety of all these people and tack that onto this project that is, is rife with problems, I think is an issue. So I would appeal to this board to deny the Blue Sky Tower project so that other projects that are more viable could be put forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Inessa Arsintieva, one-ten Old Gretnack Road. Okay? I'm for the first time in this meeting, but I get a lot of information from my neighbors, and they ask me, they cannot present here, so ask me to come and say something. I have like from different point of view, probably. You know, this is middle of wildlife refuge. You know what it means. There is like more than fifty rare-reary birds and other species in this area. I not see any research how this affect all this wildlife refuge, you know? And this is endangered species area as well. All this coverage is belong to this area. I not heard anything how this, the first is huge, huge building.
You gotta speak right into the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. Not so often do this. And the secondary, it's like, we should prevent this from this. But again, my concern and only location, my concern is not so it needed, especially for elderly people, especially for people with kids in schools and police officer, we all understand. But my concern about the not correct place to put this in the middle of wildlife refuge. Our poor like species like get there to save, and we put them a little bit more. Okay?
Thank you.
Sorry very much. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Mike Ronhock, eighty-two Sunset Circle, and also own property eighty, one oh four DeGrasse Road. First, I'd like to say, I'm sorry, a little disappointed in the fact that at the last meeting, when this was proposed to be the, the application was proposed to be withdrawn, I asked if, if the, if it was voted on and that the, that the new application was resubmitted, that all the information that's been submitted, I have a list here that was given to us before, I don't know, it starts at Exhibit A and goes all the way to Exhibit OO, if all that information would be transferred over. And I believe I was told it was. So I'm a little disappointed.
It's not. So if there's, if there's materials that were submitted that you have, that you have access to...
I would like the opportunity to do that, please.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That would be good.
Madam Chair, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
If it's not part of this package, and myself and Joe were not part of that previous meeting.
Right.
That's not part of the package. Because I seem to remember that the meeting, we talked about this, when we talked about the withdrawal of the application, it was going to be a new package, and we're starting from square one. So...
Should I clarify?
Yeah.
If, if somebody has access to materials that were submitted last time, and you want to submit them now, you need to make sure that, one, it applies to this application, right?
Right. It does.
And, and submit it.
Okay.
You know...
I would have submitted it if I had known.
I can't stop people from submitting things.
Madam Chair, may I also try to...
No, wait a minute. But I want to finish my sentence, guys. It's getting late. It's my what you now, sorry. But the project proponent is going to look at all that and respond to it.
Okay.
Right? So just, just make sure that it still applies. Otherwise, you know, it's going to get thrown out.
It will. It will. It's the same.
And they submit it so we can get a copy.
I mean, the application hasn't changed pretty much, except for...
It's still gotta be submitted, though. Yeah, I got, I don't have a copy of it, so it's gotta be submitted. So if you can make sure that gets submitted.
I would have already submitted it had I known that it needed to be resubmitted, and I'd looked at the opportunity to do that.
Our town planner has a burning comment to say.
I remember you asking that question in the previous meeting. I did bring to this meeting all of the correspondence submitted by residents for the past proceedings, both in support and opposition. I'd like to enter them into the record.
I think you should give it to Michael. I think you should give it to somebody. I don't think you as staff should do that.
Whatever procedure is appropriate, I would like to just limit my staff from having to process all of the information again and just include these in the record, which I have here.
Yeah, I'll walk over and pick it up and hand it to you.
I, I just feel funny about staff doing that. I, I, right, go right ahead.
Okay.
I mean, but you should look at it and make sure that it's still applicable.
This is all of the letters in opposition, includes the packet that you and Terri had submitted, and these are the letters in support of the application, if you'd submit those.
Okay. Can I, do I have to submit it like right now? Okay?
It'd be great if you submit it tonight. That way, the project proponent can, right, can, can...
Yeah, I can just flip through it after.
Yeah.
I want to take up everybody's time. Okay, thank you.
And I, I hope that's okay with the project proponent.
I would just say that I would like to review what he is and is not going to be submitting because clearly if he's not going to be submitting the letters in support, then we would like to resubmit the letters in support.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to charge you to look at all the exhibits from last time and pull those out and put them in.
Well, I think they're, they're here. So I think he's going to pull out what's...
Oh, that's a complete...
Complete set.
Say the entire record of correspondence received. It's about three hundred pages.
So instead of parsing the set, I would say we could agree to resubmit everything that was previously submitted jointly.
So why don't you leave it on that table, and you guys can go through it at some point tonight?
And we have it on...
Does that sound good?
I don't know about tonight.
So the only ones that you're concerned with is anyone in support?
Well, no, I would need to go through it. So I would say that we would, we should separately and independently, over the course of the next several days, look and decide what we individually want to resubmit.
I have these all in digital format, and if this hearing is to be continued as expected, they could be submitted for the next proceeding.
All right, so we've submitted them to, and about, or we'll submit them to the project proponent? Does that sound like a good plan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Electronically, we got it to you electronically? Is that okay?
Yeah, Mike, you can hold on to those, and I can, I'll transfer the same to Liz.
Yeah, I have copies, pretty much everything.
Thanks, guys.
Excellent. Thank you, Evan. Okay, so the first thing, obviously, no one wants anybody to be in harm's way. And it's, we're not, no one's, to my knowledge, no one has ever said...
Speak right into the mic.
To my knowledge, no one has ever said that anybody should go, should be lacking EMS services or access to it. So that's not really the issue. So a couple of things. There's one, the, let's see, on the, on the, on the citing of, or on the topic of cellphone site, sites, and what was selected here, this site here was, was proposed, and it was, it was, it was selected by, not by science, for say, this is a perfect spot for application or operation. It was selected by convenience, by someone who's probably, I'm not sure who selected it, but not by, I would say by a cellphone expert, towers expert. The Federal Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six, I have, I'm going to submit this, a copy of this. One of the things is Section seven oh four require, and I'm going to read this off. It requires the federal government to take steps to help licensees in the spectrum-based services such as PCS and CELIA to get access to preferred sites for their facilities. But federal agencies and departments will work directly with the licensees to make, make federal property available for this purpose. And the FCC is directed to work with the states to find ways for the states to accommodate licensees who wish to erect towers on state property or use state easements rights of So, and it also directs the president to, or is designated to prescribe procedures with the federal government may take, make available on fair, reasonable, non-discriminately based property, rights of way, and easements under their, their control. So my question is, not my question, but I've, I've got a list of properties here in that general vicinity. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there's ten or twelve properties. I have the map and parcel numbers that are owned by a combination of the United States Government and the State of Mass, Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Mashpee. They total four hundred and sixty-eight point three-three acres. And have any of those been, has, has the federal government been approached or the state to use any of those as a viable site? I will submit a copy of that in the list. I don't believe they have been. I could be wrong about that, but if so, why not? Why would this have to be, if you, if you have to have a tower, why does it have to be in anybody's backyard when we have four hundred and sixty-eight point, sixty-eight, four hundred and sixty-eight plus acres of federal, state, and town land that's not near anybody's house? That's right adjoining to that exit. And that's also, one of those locations is, I'm trying to think of the name of the road that, it's probably to say about David Maxim, the guy for the Cape Cod Commission, he, he actually suggested that would be a better location. I can't think of the name of the road, but I can, I can show you. And it's also been brought up that, you know, some of it is town conservation land. So on that note, there's, on Sunset Circle, a few years ago, excuse me, by John's Pond, there's a, there's a, there's a lot, and I'm just trying to find the lot and number. But anyways, there's a lot that, but the pond there, that was given to the town for conservation for access to the pond, for, for everybody in town of Mashpee. Because it's most, the adjoining parcel is owned by the neighborhood, and it's, it's a private access. But that piece of land was given to the town as conservation, as access to the, for the pond. Now, there was a drainage issue in the, on the road there, and the town of Mashpee took that piece of conservation land, and it is now two giant drainage pits that, and there's no access across that property pretty much to get to the pond anymore. So we, you know, people have said, well, that's conservation land, can't be touched. Well, you know, obviously, there is some kind of provision to let you take and use partial of conservation land for needed infrastructure because it's already been done, and, and that, that site was used. I should add that plot and lot right here, but I can provide that where it is, what the, I don't know what the actual address, it'd be probably like fifty or fifty-four Sunset Circle. So that would include on my list of properties that, that would, that would better serve New Seaberry, Pompanas, it, town land that, that could be accessed, I believe. So I, you know, as far as the sighting and the location of it, it, it clearly, when you look at the, the coverage maps, if I lived in Pompanas, and I was still, I was asking for cell service, I would not be happy with this proposal because most of Pompanas is not covered. Your RF guy says, well, his first map, the white area, there's no coverage. Then he shows the green map with the white area and says the white area has coverage. Well, it's white on both maps, and one is covered and one is not covered. I don't, I'd love to have an explanation how that works. And speaking of those maps, Attachment D, I did not see that through the Cape Cod Commission that shows the whole area green. That is a new map that came out of wherever, that I don't believe is part of the original submittal proposal. So I'm wondering how that changed. The other thing I'd like to speak to is... This is part of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act of February twelfth of, of February of two thousand and twelve, in Section six oh four, six four zero nine. And it reads that, in regards to cellphone towers, general notwithstanding, notwithstanding Section seven oh four of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six or any other provision of law, the state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. And it goes on to explain that, what that definition is of physical dimensions. They can raise a cellphone tower of not more than ten percent with, and you have to approve it. The height of the, and also a height of one additional antenna array separation from the nearest existing antenna, not to exceed twenty feet. So at a hundred and fifty feet, nine and a half percent is fourteen point two-five feet. So a hundred and fifty foot tower can, I think, can conceivably be a hundred and sixty-four and a half foot tower without you being able to have any say in it. So I don't think that's a good deal by any stretch. So I'd like to submit these two to the board, the copies of those laws, and what can change And the, Joe, Mr. Cummings touched on that. You are correct. Someone from New Seaberry told you about that, outdoor distributed antenna system. I saw a copy of one of the proposals, and it's only, I think it's twelve antennas. As you said, it was like twenty, but I think it was like twelve of them, the, the copy sheet. But I mean, it's reasonably, not, not a reasonably huge project. It can, it can be done. Someone's already proposed it, they proposed to do it. So I, I'm sure that, I don't remember the fellow's name, but that's hired by the cell tower company to say that it's maybe not feasible. Well, he's here to... Well, he's here to tell you that a cellphone tower is the best way. He's not here to tell you what other things can work, so.
Well, I was under the impression that somebody was looking into it from the conversation.
Well, it was proposed, it was brought to them, it was proposed to them, someone has a engineering, uh, in, in this paperwork, it's probably in here. I supplied that before I supplied the person's, um, business, their name, their phone number, their contact information, the person that proposed that to them and, and, and as Dawson said, he can do it. So, I'll, I'll re-submit that, so. I should have that.
Watch the corner.
Mr. Ron Hock, are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ron Hock, let me know that he's done. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yep, come right up. Hi.
Hi. Madam Chairman and the Board, my name is Jane Lebel and I live on Lisa Lane in Mashpee. And I would just like to say, if I remember, I've been to all of the meetings, town meeting, zoning, and planning board. And a couple of the meetings were shown areas of Pompaneset, South Cape Beach, that are not going to get any better, um, service. And I know they need it and I wouldn't want to be without it either. But I really think the board and even the town should really look into some alternative, viable, uh, other ways to get good service to that whole area. And South Cape Beach, I would be worried about it too. But I get service down there with Verizon, but I don't think you're gonna get it with other carriers with this tower. And thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Good.
Eighty-five, Eric Labrano, 85, Blue Castle Drive. Um, I'm just gonna probably reiterate what everybody has already spoken of. Um, I don't think Blue Sky has, uh, proven that this area is the proper spot for this tower. It's inefficient for the coverage of Pompaneset. Um, that's been proven. The maps that they showed were inadequate. Um, I appreciate the guy from the real estate, but he had to go all the way to New Zealand to do comparisons. And, uh, it just doesn't make sense. I wonder if he interviewed the seller and the realtor that sold those houses and said, "Well, you got this ugly tower in your backyard, so you can't ask for top dollar." I'd like to know if that was asked. But, uh, thank you very much for your time and hope you don't vote for this and, uh, you pick a better area that'll serve the EMS and New Seaberry better. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public? Okay. So, um, now I'd like to go to board members. Uh, Joe Callahan, do you have any questions at this time?
Um, one moment. Uh, quick question for you, Evan. Just being new to this now. Um, just, I believe you said it earlier, but just confirming, you guys were granted a variance for that location, correct?
Correct, for the height.
Uh, and what was the relief you were granted on that area?
It was for 150 feet.
Okay, I want to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can you just say who granted that?
That would be the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
Also contained in the-
Our package.
It is, um, exhibit seven, and I would also reference the DRI decision, which also approves for 150 feet. That's exhibit six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, uh, what, uh, one of the gentlemen says, I don't remember his name, I'll have to look back up again, but he said about this, uh, percentage increase that can be done without any approval. Any validity to that statement?
There is validity to the statement. I would submit that when I respond to the volumes of issues and misstatements that have been put forth here tonight. Um, you know, I'm, I would suggest now, since I wasn't given the opportunity for each one, I'll put it into a written memorandum addressing each one of those comments. So I will brief section 6409 for you. Um, he's in part right, there are certain circumstances. I mean, it gets, it's, it's a legal analysis of what an eligible facility is, but the very short answer is, is that the, um, TCA has been amended to allow an increase in 10% or 20 feet in height without approval by any local jurisdiction. And again, it's the, um, it's the code of the federal government to deploy wireless service to everyone, and this is one, one way and one manner in which they're doing it. I can also state that we only need 150 feet at this time.
If something pops up.
Okay. All right. Um, Joe, do you mind if I go?
My guess.
All right. So, um, into the record, just so that we have, everybody has the materials, I'm gonna submit the zoning bylaw, um, the RFP for, um, a cellular wireless equipment, uh, at fire station number two that was issued, gosh, was before 2017, that's for sure.
It was 2016.
Was it 2016?
I believe so.
By, um, the town manager. The lease agreement that was signed between Blue Sky Tower and, um, the town of Mashpee in 2017. Um, a copy of the town meeting vote from October 15th, 2018, uh, where there was an amendment to the bylaw, um, proposing that this site be put into the overlay, the wireless overlay district, which, that failed. Um, we just, we heard reference to, um, a, a zoning board of appeals variance that has been appealed by the abutters, um, to Commonwealth of Massachusetts Superior Court in Barnstable. Um, and that was, um, received by the court, uh, March 19th, 2019, so I'll put that copy in. Um, the zoning act from Mass General Laws, chapter 40A, and the isotrope, uh, report on the, um, application that went to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. So I'm gonna put that into the record. I'm gonna ask staff to start giving everything a unique, um, exhibit number and making sure that the public has access to it, the project proponent and the other, um, board members. That's my library. Okay, so, um, so I already talked to you about the views from the historic site. You were gonna give us access to the NEPA report.
Correct.
Um, I wanted to, um, make sure through all, all of this, um, there are two sections of our bylaw that talk about, um, monitoring the cell tower and removing it if it's abandoned, that that's somehow incorporated, um, into these discussions. Okay. So that's bylaw section 17445L, monitoring and maintenance, and 17445M, abandonment or discontinuation. So we need to know what your plan is to, I'm sure you do have a plan on how to address those two issues.
Can you give me those sections again?
Yeah. It's, it's 17445L, monitoring and maintenance, and 17445M, abandonment and discontinuation. So, um, I noticed that in the application, you went through a lot of the, the zoning bylaw on this matter, um, but it just seemed to like stop at that point. And I think usually that's put in as a condition into a decision, but.
Yeah, I would submit that typically, you know, the compliance with these sections would be a standard condition in any approval that we would certainly submit to adhere to.
Okay. Um, I have a, um, okay, I'm not gonna say that. Um, I, I do have an issue with the Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact Decision, um, in that on page six and finding 25, it states that the cell tower is in the overlay district. Um, I tried to get the commission to look at that again. I don't think I have the authority to force the applicant to do that, but I would rec, strongly recommend that you contact the Cape Cod Commission for modification.
I have discussed this with, uh, Chair, Chief Regulatory Officer Ideman, as I believe, um, Mr. LaRaz, and he has stated and communicated both to me and I believe to Evan as well, that, that the location with or without the wireless overlay has no impact on this decision, which has been recorded.
So, and what I'm concerned about is the Cape Cod Commission Act, section 13D3. Um, and I just want to go on the record that I, I am concerned about that being, um, an issue.
So we can certainly have Mr. Ideman, Ideman put in writing, um, that, you know, this is not an issue.
Yep. We already did, but I disagree with him.
Right, and the decision is on record and they, they have separate jurisdiction, I would submit, to interpret their own regulations under the Cape Cod.
Right, so I just want to go on the record that I recommend the project proponent, uh, to get it modified, to deal with that. Um, okay. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the RFP. So, so if I understand correctly, the RFP from 2016 had no other sites except for this site, right?
That's how RFPs work. So it's, it's a public process where a, a public body chooses a site and then puts it out to bid. Now, the only way that a, a cell tower company or a cell tower, um, provider would bid on a site is if it would rectify a coverage gap. As you can imagine, they would not expend the time, resources, money, or efforts to place a cell tower in an area that would not remedy a significant coverage gap.
So, um, during your discussions with the, the town regarding this RFP, did, were any other sites discussed?
That is not how an RFP works, however, I would-
Yes or no question?
I would submit that I was not involved in the negotiation of the RFP for Blue Sky Towers.
So that's a no. That's a no. You guys, when you were meeting with them, you never?
I didn't say that, Madam Chair, when I said I was personally not involved in the negotiations of the RFP with the town of Mashpee for Blue Sky Towers, so I don't have any intimate knowledge.
Oh, you weren't, okay.
However, typically, an RFP, I mean, it's legally, it's procured for one location in this particular RFP. So there was not liberty to go outside the RFP, at least in the award of this bid, to discuss other sites.
Okay. So, so could you find out for me, from your team, from Blue Sky Tower, if any other sites were discussed? I'd like to know that.
I can tell you that, however, it's completely irrelevant. What is relevant is what other alternative sites were identified by Blue Sky Towers and the personal wireless service providers, not whether other sites outside of what would work for the carriers were discussed in the RFP process. It's completely irrelevant.
So, so is, is that a yes or a no?
I can get you the information.
Thank you. That's great. That's great.
I would submit for the record that it's irrelevant. Thank you.
Get used to this. This happens a lot with me. All right. So, um, okay. And I'd, I'd love to know who, um, who, who they met with. I'd love to know, um, who they met with, um, with, in the town during those discussions. If they're willing to tell me, that would be great.
I'm sure if you would like to know who the town, was representatives were, that would be more appropriately requested to the town, as you are a governmental body of the town.
I know, but-
Yeah, so that's my answer on that question.
If you could pass that on to Blue Sky too.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to be submitting that information. The RFP is a sealed bid process. It's statutory under Massachusetts General Laws. We can certainly submit-
Sealed into a certain time and then it's public.
Right, and now it's public, and so that information is at your disposal.
Okay, so that's no. Okay. Um, we heard a little bit about, um, and I don't, about the coverage area. So I'm wondering, um, has anybody done an analysis about how much, um, conservation and open space and undeveloped land is in that new proposed coverage area?
Um, there was some analysis given to you by the RF engineers on what population would be served, however, and I've already made notes because of other comments from, um, the residents. It, there's federal case law that determines that the carriers themselves are the only ones who are enabled to decide what their coverage gap is. So it is not up to the local jurisdiction, it is not up to the tower company, it is not up to the consumers to decide what's being effective and whether that's significant. They're allowed to decide what the level of service that's sufficient for their standards as they're providing to their customers is and what that search area is.
So, so are you saying that, um, that you would, you, you would purposely service an area that had no people?
Um, I believe people do use the wilderness areas. They may not reside in the wilderness areas, but certainly somebody could be walking in the wilderness area and have a fall and need cell coverage or be enjoying the wildlife or the floral or the fauna and need cell service. So certainly, and again, under the TCA, as I previously stated, there is a mandate to bring coverage to the entire United States, not just the more heavily populated. Now, do the carriers go to the more heavily populated areas first? Of course, it's a business and you're serving your consumers. But the government mandate is to bring service everywhere.
Okay. Okay. Um, I also put, put in, um, the copy of the lease and I draw people's attention that you talked about the revenue generation. If I interpret the lease right, it's $2,000 a month?
I believe that's accurate.
I think that's right.
And there's also a separate capital improvement contribution?
Of $100,000.
I would have to look back at the lease.
I think it's $100,000 to the fire department.
To the town's fire department, yes.
Yeah, the capital, yeah, to the fire department. Um, I'm, this is my notes, sorry. Okay. Um, okay. Um, so, the reason why I had you do the balloon tests is I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the, the impact on 95103 DeGrasse and 56 Blue Castle. And, um, I, I am concerned that those are serious impacts on those two homes. So I'm just wondering, did Blue Sky Tower have any meetings with these butter, abutters to soften or mitigate the impacts?
Um, certainly, we have not met independently. We did, actually, before filing our application, we, um, held a neighborhood meeting. I don't believe the notice got out sufficiently, nobody showed up, but our project engineer was there to answer any questions. We certainly have discussed with all of the relevant boards, with the Cape Cod Commission and with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, that any camouflaging techniques that are possible to lessen the impacts on the neighborhood, we welcome. We will do a monopane, although personally, I think this is not attractive, some, it's a matter of preference, we will paint the tower. But unfortunately, infrastructure is infrastructural, we cannot make it invisible. And with, with the location of where the coverage gap is, it is going to have some impact on residential views. This is just a nature of infrastructure.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I was just wondering if you, if you met with the abutters. Um, people are shaking their heads and raising their hands back there, so I-
Unfortunately, I, they were not, I was not given an opportunity to respond, so.
Right, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna inter, interrupt, but the public hearing is still open, you can still send comments in.
We will have the date. We used a room at the Mashpee Town Library. Our project engineer, Jesse Marino, was there. He was there with the plans and all of the materials, um, and that date can be submitted.
So I think, I, I think I'm gonna call this, that the people want to see, like, when was advertised, how it was advertised, uh, when was it? I, I-
Sure, it was in the balloon notification placed in the paper, I believe, but I can certainly provide that information.
That would, that would be great.
I would also note that it is not a requirement. We are doing it out of goodwill for the community.
Absolutely. There are, there's another project, they're, they're waiting to, to, to get up before the planning board and they met with the abutters and I think it's-
Yeah, we, we tried to do it as a matter of course.
Um, my, my question is kind of that, um, was there any, so in the lease, it talks about the exact site of the monopole within the parcel of land.
Correct.
Was there any conversation about moving that within that parcel of land? Was that site set by the town or was it set by, by Blue Sky?
The site was set by the town, um, and in discussions with the Cape Cod Commission and through the NEPA process, it was, um, confirmed, at least with those two regulatory bodies, that this would be the least impact on the environment and the residents. And we shifted it on the property, it's just certainly going to impact another residence a little more than a little less than another. Again, it, it's, it's going to be seen by someone.
Mm-hmm. All right. So I think that's all that fit on my piece of paper. Okay. I'm gonna go to Joe.
Well, I heard some interesting things here. One, I, I would like to find out where the information is that says-
Oh, your mic. Speak right.
Okay. I have it here. Uh, where the information is that says that, uh, we could use town, state, or federal property.
I will be responding to that in writing. That was read out of one snippet of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. I don't believe Mr. Ron Hock is an attorney, so I will certainly legally analyze, um, his statement. I can submit for you that there are no federal or state lands within this search ring that would be a feasible alternative to remedy these coverage and capacity gaps.
Well, it seems like somebody has the addresses of those places.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, how far these properties are away from our site, but I do know our gap. I know where the search ring is and I can- I know where the search ring is, and I can tell you that there's no federal state lands within that search ring which would satisfy the gap.
If maybe we could get the information, then I could give it to you, and you could just take a look at it.
Absolutely.
You would know right away.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. And the other thing is the water tower on Rock Landing Road, is that a possible site?
It is not a possible site for a couple of reasons. One reason is that an RFP would need to be issued by the town for that site, and an RFP was issued by the town for this site. And there's, again, I can provide the case law for you, which says that if an RFP is issued for one site in the town, you're not going to be required, when you're this far down the road, to then go pursue an RFP for a different town-owned property. The town has spoken where they would like to see this facility, and it works for the applicant. Secondarily, the water tower is squarely within that conservation and recreational use restricted area pursuant to the agreement of judgment that I referenced between New Seaberry and the Cape Cod Commission. So while the water tank itself is not under conservation restriction, any access to that property would have to go right through the restricted area, which is prohibited. No roads are allowed through that area, so we've got two reasons here. One more reason, which again, we'll put into the memorandum, is the impact on residences is going to be similar. So when you've got a body or a court of law evaluating feasible alternatives, moving it from one site, where we've done the mitigation to limit to the extent possible the impact on residences, to another site, that's going to have similar, or perhaps in many cases even greater, impact on a number of residences, is not going to be something that's mandated, it's simply not rational.
So I'm going to, I know it's getting late, but please don't shout out, thank you.
The next question is, and I think you answered this one, is have you reviewed the outdoor antenna distributing system? I think I have that right.
We have reviewed it several times, and again, I would point in my opening statement, the board, to the documents at Exhibit 10 and Exhibit 14, which are supplemental statements provided by both of our RF engineers, specifically how these alternative technologies will not work. And again, I will submit that a layperson review of this data telling us that there is an alternative technology is not sufficient. We have two qualified experts in the fields of radio frequency technology telling you that alternative technology here is not a feasible alternative.
Okay, and the last question is, could we look at increasing the height of the Falmouth antenna?
We don't have any control over the Falmouth Tower, I don't know what the total height on, but I can look into what the height is, but that's not an available property. And as Mr. Valenti submitted in his testimony, it's not going to remedy enough. It's going to improve things some, but it's not going to accomplish the goals of this particular gap and capacity issues. It's not in the right location to do what is being sought to be done.
But it may get rid of a lot of that white area.
No, it certainly wouldn't get rid of the white area at the beach.
At the beach, is that what you said?
Well, he's saying the white area, I mean, that is too far away, and again, I am not a radio frequency engineer, but we did hear testimony that that is not going to accomplish what needs to be done here.
Okay, that's...
Well, on those maps, the white area was shown with Verizon, Timo, and they didn't cover anything. And your engineer said, "Well, we'll get some covered, but not full covered." But some coverage ain't what the people are looking for.
It's less than acceptable coverage, shown on the Verizon map, okay? But again, we have to remember that there's not going to be one tower that's going to get every pocket of desired coverage. So they're going to do the best that they can do with the minimal height necessary here. If they could raise it to 200 feet and we could show you with data that we could cover the beach at 200 feet and get approved, then we would have the federal on our corner. We're telling you that 150 feet is the minimal height necessary to get the widest swath of area coverage. The fact that there's going to be remaining areas of white or diminished coverage, not no coverage, maybe no coverage, does not mean that this site is not an effective solution, that's a really important point. It just means that in the future, another solution will have to be accomplished for that site.
I can see in five years, the people are going to complain down at that area, "We don't get our coverage enough."
Understood.
And we're going to have to put another tower, and where are we going to put that? In New Seaberry. So we should have put that in the first place, in New Seaberry, to cover everything.
Unfortunately, there's no feasible alternative in New Seaberry.
You can be confused, because you say you have the right, if the coverage is a gap, the federal government steps in and say you have a right to put the cell tower.
Yes, but you can't make a property owner, no. You can't make a property owner enter into an agreement to place a tower on their property. The federal government is not going to mandate a private or a public property owner.
So the only reason why, because this is town-owned land?
It's not the only reason, again, this was a statement made by one of the residents that is a mischaracterization of what I said. A willing landlord is one of many reasons that we can rule out a site. It's the first one, I mean, it's the very first threshold, if you don't have somebody who's interested, then you move on.
Even on the last thing, about how come you can state that law at that site and not in New Seaberry?
But there are other issues too, there's conservation restrictions, recreational use restrictions, there's access issues. There's if it's financially prohibitive to bring utilities, there's, I mean, there's fall zone and setback issues. A willing landlord is number one, but there are a host of reasons that makes a site not a feasible alternative.
And that's why I say one more thing, if we do put a tower there, I like it with a tree on it, okay?
We have no preference.
I mean, back in 98, I was on this, and that was my preference back then, they showed us the trees, they do them out in California. You know, they're the sequoia trees, so...
Okay, so now I'm going to go to the town planner, do you have any technical?
Some information about the Water District question. My understanding of the Water District is that it's like a quasi-governmental agency created by an act of the legislature, in this case, it would be town meeting. So created by legislative action, but operates independently of the town of Mashpee. So they, the Mashpee Water District, would need to be a willing landlord, just like any other private property owner would. So if the Mashpee Water District is not willing to lease the space and the water tower, which my understanding is, the Water District was approached for this and did not want to lease the water tower to Blue Sky or any other cell phone tower developer, so unless the Water District is a willing landlord, it's not a feasible option. To respond to the town meeting vote in October 2018?
No, do you have anything about the application? I'm asking you for technical advice on the application.
Can I respond to the couple of comments about...
Not from the public?
Federally-owned government and state-owned property?
Nope, nope, let the project proponent, that's their job, to comment.
I just think it's important for deliberations of this board, you need to know this information.
Right, but I think they're in good hands, so I don't want you to speak, I don't want you to speak in the place of the project proponent, let them do that. I'm asking your review of this proposal. Yeah, if you don't have any comments at this time, that's fine, we'll go to Charlie.
I have a lot of comments that I think would provide a lot of value to this board and their deliberations, that is information based on...
No, no, I'm not going to have, no, I'm not going to have, the project proponent, if there's a gap in coverage of their response, fine.
Madam Chair, this is our paid professional town planner, who's giving us some information to help us...
I'm asking him for his comments on this.
But he's trying to make comments, and you're limiting him, I'd like to hear his comments, and we find they're irrelevant, then they're irrelevant.
Stuff that's been, that's...
Let him comment.
I am not, I'm not happy that we have a town staff that is not a neutral party, go ahead.
I am providing completely objective information based on rules and regulations regarding properties that members of the public have identified as potential feasible alternatives, which this board is specifically tasked with considering in their deliberation. So 100% neutral, I don't like what you just inferred, but I'm going to continue if you'll allow it.
Let's hear, let's hear.
A member of the public mentioned the town meeting vote in October of 2018. What the town meeting voted on was the inclusion of this particular parcel, 101 Red Brook Road, in the wireless facility overlay district, not whether or not, not to approve or deny this project. And so, that failed the town meeting. So the zoning states that a tower of the height proposed must be within the wireless facility overlay district. For this board's consideration, if the applicant had not sought a variance, which they have and have been given relief, one may ask, the comment that keeps coming out is this property is not zoned for that parcel. Irrelevant now that the Zoning Board of Appeals has granted that variance, because it's allowed within the base zoning by special permit in the R3 and R5 districts. So that's important for you to consider in your deliberation.
That's an opinion, sir.
That's a factual reality. The Zoning Board of Appeals is an independent body who has granted relief on this project, so that's just reality. The question about properties owned by the federal government and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they are likely within the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge and are likely have conservation restrictions on them, or are owned by tribal properties. We could look into the ownership of those properties, that's just something to note. And the last thing regarding property under jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Chapter 84 does allow development on property under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It would require approval of the CONSCOM. So if there is a feasible alternative that is within Conservation Commission property, that could be approved if the Conservation Commission allows it. And lastly, RF engineer, we did receive in the previous application quotations from third-party experts. If the board would like to move forward with a third-party review of the radio frequency emissions data, we can submit those quotes into the record, that's it.
I'm going to go to Charlie.
Yeah, a question just popped up on my head, what you said with regards to her, if you don't mind. So you said in conservation area could be considered if conservation considers it or authorizes it?
If there's not a firm Conservation Commission restriction, the CONSCOM can approve development.
When you evaluated the other properties that you have listed in here, you have the addresses, did any of those properties, were any of those conservation?
There are some conservation lands, and I would clarify, the conservation restriction that I'm talking about, New Seaberry, is not the same as needing conservation approval. The restriction is pursuant to a court settlement and is, you know, a binding legal document. So to undo that would take the willingness of New Seaberry and the Cape Cod Commission, and, you know, going to court and having it removed, which would never be considered something that, you know, we would be forced to do. The Conservation Commission approval, I mean, clearly, if there's a hierarchy of sites and if you have a property like the fire station, which is not conservation land and does not require conservation approval, then that site is going to be more preferable and on the higher totem pole than something with wetlands or brooks or...
Yeah, I'm just curious, if a site was evaluated that was conservation land and...
I believe there is some conservation land sites, but failed for several other reasons.
Okay.
Charlie?
My comment is limited to the technical review of the plan submittal. The date of the plan was, I think, July 24th of this year. I had one minor comment, which I conveyed to Ms. Thompson about the paving detail that's on the plan. It's not included, it is included in here, but as a supplemental sheet. My request is that if your plan is approved, that it be incorporated into the full set of plans so that if I or someone else goes out there to inspect it, that it'll be a part of the documentation that they're using for construction. Everything else that was on the plan, I looked at with respect to my previous comments. They've addressed those issues, so I have no further concern with the plan.
Okay, so I think unless there's any pressing comment from board members, I think we should pick a date to continue.
I would just like to formally enter into the record that sheet detail that Ms. Riley is talking about, because we just completed that.
The one other thing I would like to...
You have to wait for the mic.
And just that the sheet detail is included in the exhibit section of your binder.
The one other detail I would like to, before the board votes on a continuation date, is in regards to the radio frequency consultant. First, I would say that we respectfully would request that this item is waived by the board. We find it to be duplicative and excessive. The radio frequency emissions data that was provided to this board and to the Cape Cod Commission was independently reviewed by their retained expert and found to be compliant with federal law. It's a very standard calculation, Mr. Maxon, their consultant, is certainly well-qualified to review that data and has confirmed its validity. If the board does choose to go forward with that review, we would only submit to agreeing to a limited amount of money based upon the fact that this data is concise and has been technically reviewed by an expert in the field. And finally, I would submit that this, there was a representation made by one of the residents that the radio frequency expert retained by this board would review the coverage maps, and that is not allowed under Section H, it is specifically limited to reviewing any documentation regarding FCC guidelines with emission standards, that we would certainly only agree to review of that nature.
Okay, so we do have, this is a special permit. We do have regulations that allow us to hire a consultant for anything that has to do with the special permit application. So not just limited to an RF engineer?
Specifically, the wireless section refers to limiting, it's specifically limited to an engineer for this review.
So there is something in our bylaw that talks about that, but our special permit procedures and regulations do allow the Planning Board to hire a consultant and charge the project proponent those fees.
If it specifically states that it could do so, and under your wireless bylaw, it limits to radio frequency emissions.
Right, but in general, our special permit, I...
Perhaps we could refer to Town Council for opinion on that.
I already have, I already have.
And have you received that opinion?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so we could share that?
No, it's confidential.
I'll contact Town Council, thank you.
The first question is, because I'm trying to get you to, my first question is, do we want to have that conversation? Do we want to hire a consultant for this? Because we haven't talked about that. I mean, is there something in here that you feel that we need a consultant and additional support on? Because it's a special permit application, you can.
Do we already have that information contained within this packet?
What?
A consultant review from the previous?
No, no, what I gave was isotopes analysis, which was the Cape Cod Commission's consultant, that looked at, you know, an application very similar to this.
Yes, nearly identical.
It's very similar.
I would submit that submitting the isotope report is a little bit of misstatement of the facts, because that report was submitted by Mr. Maxon before consultation with the applicant and before presenting at the public hearing. So this was his initial review of the application. After that initial report, we submitted voluminous data answering all of his questions. And of course, the testimony that occurred at the public hearings then solidified all that data. So the really, the relevant document and his findings are in the DRI decision itself. And in the DRI decision itself, he states many things which clarify his initial questions about location, about height, about need, and certainly about radio frequency emissions, of which he never had a concern.
So, and that's in your application, that's in Exhibit in your application?
Correct.
The DRI, in the DRI?
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, I'm satisfied.
Well, I thought I read it as well.
Yes.
So, does anybody on the board want to hire a consultant?
We're thinking of looking at the same thing.
Correct.
Right.
I'm just asking. Okay, so the whole point about whether it's covered or not is moot.
He's not going to tell us anything different.
All right, so I think that's the only procedural matter I had, do you want to pick a date to continue this to?
What day, we have the 18th, that's two weeks.
I'm not available on the 18th.
Okay, I need a little more time to, there's a lot of stuff.
There's a meeting in October, we don't have the full room, is that the 18th, October 18th? We don't have that?
No, that's September 18th.
Right, but then the second Wednesday?
It's the 16th.
The 16th, we don't have the full room, remember?
That's right.
We have one the 2nd.
October 2nd, I'm proposing a public hearing tonight to discuss zoning articles at 7:10, but there are no other scheduled hearings. In fact, there are no scheduled hearings currently until the board discusses that item.
Ms. Thompson, the 2nd, all right?
That should be fine.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue this to October 18th.
You said you have something at 7:10?
There is, I'm proposing the board set a public hearing date to discuss zoning articles in the town meeting, we're at 7:10, so 7:20 would be perfectly adequate.
7:20.
For this one?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion, we schedule a public, continue the public hearing to Wednesday, October 2nd at 7:20.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Can we make sure that we receive all that information? Because I want to go through it, that we've received from the audience, Mr. Ronhawke? Because I want to go through it, that we've received from the audience, Mr. Ron, how come I have you? Just want to make sure we all get copy.
So what is, what is the procedure when people give you materials at a public hearing?
So what we're doing now, we're going to, all of these are officially exhibits in the record for the consideration of this application. I'd like to hold on to your binders after this so that we can update every, before every public hearing, with those exhibits listed in your binder and then redistribute to prior to the public hearing. And you'll also receive them in digital form like you do before every meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with digital too. I mean, I'll read it there, but I just want to get it.
So are you going to put these exhibits online?
We can put them on our website. Thanks. All right, Patty?
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Do we close the public hearing? Or do we vote to continue it?
Do we have a vote? Yeah, we had a vote.
Yeah, we took a vote.
We missed the whole thing.
Thank you. LLC has filed an application for a special permit to construct a coffee shop. Oh, thank you, Renee. Modi LLC has filed an application for a special permit to construct a coffee shop with facilities for processing and packaging coffee, along with a future industrial tenant at 10 Evergreen Circle Lot B, MAP 19, Block 10, as required by Section 174-25 I-16 and Section 174-45.6 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. The property is located in the C3 zoning district and is within the light industrial overlay district. The board will also consider a request for waivers pursuant to Section 174-20, yes, Section 174-25.14 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. I think I have to read in the public hearing notice, too.
Only if it was for this meeting, you know, a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, done.
We need to continue it.
I don't think there was a public hearing notice.
And we're going to, yeah, you have to use the mic.
Exactly.
Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Kevin Corain, and I have the pleasure of representing the applicant once again before the board in pursuit of a special permit to open a facility at the corner of Route 130 and Evergreen Circle. And I'll let Patrick introduce himself. Patrick is from Atlantic Design and Engineering.
Yep, Patrick Johnson with Atlantic Design Engineering.
Since the last meeting, the board had requested that we do a few things. And as a result of the input from our butters, we made some changes to the plan to address concerns that they had raised. The principal change, which would obviate the need for any waiver, is that we are retaining 100 feet of a buffer between the proposed facility and the nearest abutter. So the 100-foot buffer is there, and it is not being disturbed. So that's one issue. The other issue I think that the board had raised was relative to be sure that the outside seating area was adequately screened. We have provided fencing. That fencing is shown on the plan. There is a six-foot-high fence that is proposed, which will be either a stockade fence or a vinyl fence, and that is shown on the plan and I believe is clear. Beyond that, I know that the hour is getting late. We hashed through much of this the last time, if not all of it, the last time we were here. So I really don't have anything to add. If the board has any questions for us, we're more than happy to respond, but I believe that we have addressed the concerns that were raised. We also submitted information to Mr. Rowley. Mr. Rowley has had the opportunity to review that information, has commented, I believe, to the board that changes have been made consistent with the comments that he had reviewed and provided to our engineer. And I believe that the project that you have before you conforms to the requirements of the bylaw and should qualify for special permit relief by this board.
Just a special permit?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'm going to start. All right, so this, this is the colorized version, right? So this fence kind of takes a right angle, is that right? Does it come out?
If you look at the, if you look at the site plan.
So it's the same fence, the whole?
The fence is here, runs this way, runs out to Route 130 and over to this point.
Oh, and then it stops.
Correct. And there's a split rail, split rail fence at the, at the corner.
Okay, because I thought, I thought I saw a comment for a split rail fence.
That's at the corner, obviously for visibility purposes, it would make no sense to have a six-foot-high fence at the corner of Evergreen Circle.
I get much with that, yeah.
And Route 130.
So now you're going to have a retaining wall.
Retaining wall is in the hole, because we're not filling the hole. You didn't want the hole to be filled because it impacted the 100-foot buffer. So we are not filling the hole, and I believe that there's a retaining wall to make sure that that area is protected.
And so that area where the hole is, that's going to be left in a natural state?
Undisturbed natural state.
There you go.
Yeah, that's the, that's the word of the month.
Good answer.
And so with that, what's your percentage of undisturbed natural space?
26%.
It's still 26%?
Still 26%.
So are you, where are you disturbing? I thought it was 26% with that whole area disturbed.
That's correct. And we're not disturbing that area, but what we have done is we have, to accommodate the type of drainage that the, that the bylaw prefers, we have increased
Oh, okay.
The area of the drainage swale as compared to the plan that had been previously submitted. So the area that was going to be disturbed here is technically been picked up in the drainage basin.
All right, so I, I'm sorry I went first, but I have, I have no comments, any other comments. Dennis, do you want to?
I'm all set to say I'm okay with this. And it's going to be a nice asset for the town, because it's going to be family-friendly, and they're nice, nice neighbors to be putting this there. And the building's going to look nice, and they're going to keep the place up.
We also did provide, the chair was looking for comments relative to compliance with the Cape Cod Commission design standards. We did provide you with a summary based by our architect that's demonstrating how the proposed building conforms to those guidelines.
It's not in the bound packet. It was distributed in a separate pile. I have a copy or something.
Yeah.
But it's, it's among your 10,000 pounds of paper.
What does it look like?
It's on Conserve Group Inc., letterhead, and...
Okay.
I have extra copy.
No, I got it, I got it, yeah.
It's quite comprehensive.
Certainly, every bit as comprehensive, if not more than the information that was provided by the first applicant of the evening.
No, I know. You know, you put stuff in a bylaw and then you go, oh, what form do they use? Who's responsible for this? It really should go to the design review, and I apologize for that, so I really appreciate this.
Well, that's where it should be addressed initially.
Right. Yep, yep, and we, I haven't talked to Evan about that, but we might tweak that part of the bylaw.
And Charlie has even, Charlie has even commented that sometimes it makes more sense to have him involved at that stage of the process as opposed to the end of the process. Board of Appeals and things of that nature, right?
That is.
In some instances, it was.
In some instances.
Yeah, I had, I did, I, I did have some comments for you. You went to the Board of Appeals, and I was like, ugh! Some of my comments I couldn't make, and I really believe that our comments from this board make a project better. So I know you have a lot of clients, they go to the Board of Appeals, but if you could let us kind of get a bite at the apple before you go and get ZBA relief, I'd really appreciate that. But I like this project, so I'm reading the...
We were under certain time constraints, so I think that's part of the process as well.
I, I know.
I wasn't here, but I did get an opportunity to watch the meeting twice, and all the issues that were brought up and addressed are clearly addressed. I like the way this is laid out, because it goes right along with the Cape Cod Commission. I like the pictures, the reports, so I have no concerns with this project.
Yeah, so Joe, do you have any comments?
No, I really appreciate that you addressed everything we brought up last meeting. I have no concern at all.
Joe, do you have any comments?
No.
I'm good. Evan, do you have any comments?
I don't think there's any more applicants that have submitted potential conditions that have been discussed in prior hearings, so I'd like to just put your attention on that. Otherwise, a pleasure working with the applicant and their team.
Charlie, do you have any comments?
I went over the plans with the, Mr. Johnson a little while back. We had some discussion early today. There was only one little minor thing I saw in the plans, but I've still put my letter to you recommending the approval of it. Did I, I did put a couple of suggestions in the plan with respect to the special permit, and it had to do with the stormwater operation and maintenance as shown in Seek 4 of 6. It's certainly no problem with the operation and maintenance plan, but sometimes I've seen decisions written where it says the applicant will be responsible for the operation and maintenance plan. I'm not sure whether that carries over to owners in succession. So I'm suggesting that it include language that says it's the responsibility of all successive property owners for the project as shown. If the project changes, or the project is no longer viable, has changed in some respect, then the responsibility for that goes out the window as soon as they change the drainage. But as far as this probably...
So I think that's condition six, right?
That's correct, yeah.
You're happy with condition six as it's, okay.
Yep, and that was my only comment. Everything else has been addressed on the plans. They compare some minor grading issues, some details, so I'm happy with it.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Come right up. I think there's still, yeah.
It's Kathleen Pierce from 575 Main Street. I'd like to know what's going in with the coffee place. I know there's, you discussed it the last meeting, that somebody else was going to be moving in there, and we don't know who it is.
So this is, this is, right, so we, and I don't think the project proponent knows, correct?
We don't have a tenant or tenant at this point.
So, so this is one of our conditions. Any tenant to occupy the commercial slash industrial space shall be a compatible use with the primary use of coffee roasting and food service, and shall not be any use that will negatively impact the applicant's ability to operate a sanitary facility or any use that will have a detrimental impact on surrounding properties. So that's what we have. Is there anybody else from the public? Okay, so you have a copy of this?
Yes, we did receive a copy of that.
Okay. Evan, you want to go through it with respect to, let's see, conditions?
We cite the, Condition 1 cites all of the relevant, the plan set with all of the revisions up to September 3rd of the site plans.